We are in John Ferraro Council Chamber's Room 340 in City Hall and this meeting is now called to order. I'm joined by my colleague Councilmember Mitchell Farrell and Councilmember Karen Price is on his way down. Now, I just want to remind everybody in the -- first off, thank you so very much for coming down for this special meeting, but I want to remind everyone who wish to speak on this item to sign up at the kiosk right in the back and at the entrance. And we are expecting high attendance, so if we do -- if we run out of seats, we do have an overflow room in the City Hall four court. So, anyone who's listening and is on their way, there will be plenty of seating for you, but it'll be in a different room. And to give you -- to give everybody a sense of -- oh, and actually, I want to let people know, we have a lot of people signing up for the item. There's a couple of people who signed up for general public comment. Because this is a special meeting, we do not have general public comment. So, but don't worry about it, you don't have to re-sign up. What I'm going to do is I'm going to combine everybody, whether you sign up for general public comment or for the item, I'm going to let you all speak together. And to give everyone a sense of how this meeting's going to run, we're first going to have the County Department of Public Health provide a presentation, then we'll take comment cards from the public, and then afterwards, City Departments will provide a presentation, and I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Councilmember Mitchell Farrell, who is the author of this motion, to close us out. So, if you are in the four court overflow room and your name is called during the comment cards, please talk to the staff at the overflow room or at the entrance to council chambers so you could come on inside and make public comment. Everyone is going to be afforded one minute for public comment due to the amount of cards that we have today. So, at this point, Mr. Clerk, can you read item number one into the record, please?
Item number one, City Attorney Report Relative to the Policy Options Ban or Restricting the Sale of Flavored Tobacco Products to Youth and a Survey of Legislative Regulations and Other Jurisdictions Addressing the Issue.
Thank you. So, as I said, I'm going to first call up to the table the County Department of Health to provide us a brief presentation. Is the county here? Come on up. Provide us a brief presentation of the action the County Board of Supervisors took on October 2nd related to flavored tobacco.
Thank you. Thank you, council members, for your leadership in supporting healthy neighborhoods where all community members can thrive. I am Dr. Tony Quo, Director of Chronic Disease and Injury Prevention. I am representing here today the leadership from the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health. I have some prepared remarks from the department that I'd like to provide. Tobacco use is the leading cause of preventable disease and death in the United States. Nearly all tobacco product use begins during youth and young adulthood. I am here today to provide public health, that is, our department's perspective on the action that stands before the city to consider a comprehensive tobacco control policy and also to share with you some of our experiences with our recent County Board of Supervisors ordinance that they have passed. As you know, on October 1st, our County Board of Supervisors adopted an ordinance to strengthen the county's tobacco retail licensing program with provisions that updated the definitions of tobacco products to include e-cigarettes and other vape devices, and also provisions that prohibited the sale of all flavored tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, for retailers in our unincorporated area of Los Angeles County. The county's ordinance prohibited -- well, prohibit the sale of all flavorings, including menthol, which has been heavily marketed to minority and low-income communities, mint, and of course, other flavors that are highly appealing to youth and young adults. The county's ordinance also will prohibit flavored hookah and did not allow for any exemptions for tobacco-only or adult-only retailers. The policy currently is planning to include a six-month implementation period, which will become enforceable on May 1st, 2020. Our department, our health department, has resources and would certainly be happy to share further details of our story and work that we have done in preparing the public as well as the retailers on this new ordinance changes. We know that throughout our process, we have conducted multiple mail-ins to retailers, at least five informational meetings in the community, at least two webinar. We've even conducted a retailer survey to get a better understanding of the process for retailers in complying with this new ordinance, and of course, briefings with board offices on the science behind vaping. As other cities and communities adopt and implement similar tobacco control policies, as many may have heard, Carson recently has also adopted similar policy. We know that, to name a few, other cities like Cobra City, Redondo Beach, Beverly Hills, Burbank, and Manhattan Beach have all implemented similar ordinance. The evidence supporting our board's comprehensive flavor ban is mounting, and it is clear and persuasive. Flavored tobacco products, such as e-cigarettes, little cigars, and menthol cigarettes, are driving the current vaping epidemic that you've been hearing in the news among youth and young people. Encouraging experimentation that could lead to lifelong nicotine addiction. In fact, if you look at the statistics, more than 80% of youth who has ever used tobacco reported that their first product has been flavored. Sweet flavors like watermelon, cherry, chocolate, mint, and gummy bear appeals to youth. Flavorings tend to mask the harsh taste of tobacco, which makes it a lot easier for youth to initiate tobacco use. A recent study published in the Journal of Pediatrics actually looked at some of the recent data and concluded that the strong tobacco retailer license ordinance and policies can lower rates of cigarette and e-cigarette use among youth and young adults. All this, of course, is at the backdrop of the outbreak in the vaping-related lung injury. Sadly, for most of the latter half of this year, 2019, we have came to learn that additional health effects of vaping is that vapor's lung can sustain acute injury from vaping. This is different than what we already know from regular tobacco for the longer-range consequences of emphysema, COPD, and lung cancer. As of November 20th, 2019, the CDC has reported more than 2,200 cases of people experiencing a sudden and severe lung illness associated with vaping across -- as I was preparing these talking points, it was 49 states, but as of today, apparently Alaska has also reported a case. Most of these cases were young adults and youth, and all required hospitalization and supportive care to help them breathe, basically being a mechanical ventilation. For those, and many who survived, many have permanent lung damage. Forty-seven, including one resident right here in LA County, has died as a result of this severe lung illness outbreak. Our health department continues to recommend, and this is our position, that all residents stop vaping now until these products are properly vetted by the FDA to be safe. Evidence is mounting that e-cigarette use and/or vaping can severely impact lung function, especially for youth and young people. As we learn more about these cases, we should not lose sight of the poor health outcomes that vaping is causing and how flavoring is a key catalyst in driving youth initiation and addiction to these products. From a physiological standpoint, we know that until age 25, nicotine can negatively change an adolescent's brain, harming cell activities that control attention span, learning, and memory. Nicotine is also highly addictive. The amount of nicotine in e-cigarettes, for example, varies greatly between product and is often not labeled. You may not be aware that one pod of a popular e-cigarette device may contain as much nicotine as an entire pack of regular cigarettes. The CDC report -- has reported that younger person -- the younger person is, when they start the use of products containing nicotine, the more difficult it is to quit and then become life -- become a lifelong addiction. Ninety percent of those smokers actually began smoking before the age of 18. We recently released findings on tobacco use among LA County high school students from the 2017 and through 2018 California Student Tobacco Survey. The data is alarming. It shows that while cigarette use has reached a historic low at under 2%, e-cigarette use, vaping specifically, has overtaken traditional tobacco use. One in 10 high school students in LA County were current e-cigarette users, according to the survey. Fruit or sweet flavors were most popular products among them, and we know that over 30% had ever tried e-cigarettes. According to the CDC, there were 1.5 million more current youth e-cigarettes users in 2018 than in 2017 nationally, and as a result, both the FDA and the U.S. Surgeon General have declared youth use of e-cigarettes as an epidemic in the United States. Given these alarming statistics and the recent severe lung illness associated with vaping, it should be stressed that e-cigarette and other vape products are not FDA-approved as cessation aid or quit-smoking aid. People attempting to quit should continue to use FDA-approved treatments and/or medications such as nicotine patches or gum. While removing harmful products from circulation always is accompanied by costs to businesses manufacturing and distributing -- that manufactures and distributes such products, consumers count on swift action being taken by local agencies to protect their health. For example, foods and beverages that may be contaminated are removed from circulation and distribution. Toys with lead are recalled, and consumer products that have caused death or serious illnesses are taken off the market. Based on the outbreak of the vaping illness, lung injury, e-cigarettes and vaping appears to fall within this category of risk. In California, 50 jurisdictions are regulating the sale of flavored tobacco products. This includes San Francisco, Sacramento up north, Beverly Hills within our own county, and of course, now county of Los Angeles with its comprehensive ordinance. Of the 18 flavor tobacco policy adopted in California within the last year, none have included exemptions for the sale of menthol or any other exceptions. It should be noted that flavor tobacco policies that include an exemption have often encountered enforcement and implementation problems. Lastly, wanted to point out that according to a 2019 survey for the California Department of Public Health, tobacco stores and specific smoke shops that sold tobacco products, including e-cigarettes to young -- including e-cigarettes, actually sells e-cigarettes to young adults under 21 years of age at a higher percentage than the rest of the state, 30.6% compared to the state rate of 17.9%. In summary, the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health is committed to protecting the health and well-being of youth and the general public. As part of its mission to prevent tobacco-related disease and death, our agency supports local strategies, such as the one under consideration by the city of LA, which support healthy communities and prevent youth access to all tobacco products, especially flavorings that appeal to youth and youth people, young people. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. And I just want to, for the record, Councilmember Karen Price has joined a little while back, and I'm going to open up the questions from members. Councilmember Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few quick questions, then we'll get on to the public comment. Thank you, Dr. Quo, for all your work on this, and congratulate the county for enacting the ordinance that you have. In terms of the exemptions that are sometimes being granted in other municipalities beyond the state of California or in California, what has been -- what have been some of the concerns? Has it been about enforcement? Has it been about difficulty in regulating? Could you expand on that if you have information?
Sure. I -- we don't have information with the county yet because we're just starting out, but there are examples like the experience of Oakland. There was an exemption in Oakland's law which allowed adult-only tobacco stores to continue selling flavored tobacco, and that, according to the city official, has been very challenging.
And by flavored tobacco, do you also mean flavored vaping liquid?
Yes.
Or just -- okay.
Yes, and for them, it -- part of it is just, a lot of the store and retailers actually tries to find loopholes around that one exemption. So, one of the examples they have given, a handful of adult-only tobacco stores that kind of was there before the law actually took place, has literally increased at least post-implementation to approximately 45 adult-only stores because of the way the stores then try to remake their business model.
And in terms of the county ordinance, is it correct that it only applies to the unincorporated areas and not the 88 cities? The 88 cities take action individually?
That is correct. Our current ordinance, while it's comprehensive, covers unincorporated area at this point, although we are more than willing to share as a model ordinance for any other cities, and we certainly try to provide technical support to cities who wants them.
And the population of unincorporated LA County is roughly 100,000 people?
Actually, I believe it's about a million people for unincorporated.
Oh, unincorporated is 10% of the county population?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, I had a zero or two off there. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Does anybody have any questions for the county?
No questions for the county. I'm anxious to hear comments from the audience.
Great, thank you for that, and thank you so very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
And again, we're going to have public comment, and then after that, we will have the city attorney and the CLA come up to the table for their presentation. But at this point, I do want to take a public comment because we do have a lot of speakers, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to call about 10 names at a time. So, if you hear your name, if you could start lining up, and if you're in the overflow room, let the staff in that room know and come on in over to this room. So, I am going to call the first 10 individuals, and everyone's going to get a minute each, and I appreciate everyone following the rules. Jay Oku, Cherry Lee, Catherine Shirley, Thomas Torres, Torisis, Dr. Jessica Sims, Marissa Neville, Yaneth Rodriguez, and Myra Contreras. You don't have to speak in that order. If you're -- if you heard your name called, if you could come on up and state your name.
Hello, Jay Oku, father of two, and I commend you, honorable city representatives, for being the first city in California to include e-cigarettes in the definition of tobacco products. I commend you, the city attorney's office, who led in establishing the first tobacco retailer licensing unit, regulating the 4,000 tobacco retailers of approximately 300 vape shops within those numbers, based on the LA Times, focusing on the retailer level on the prohibition against sales to youth through enforcement and education. With all due respect, we're apparently here today because the city attorney's office has failed to do its job when it comes to regulating these products for kids. Furthermore, in the executive summary, points out that on page 8, Section 3, that the LAPD is the recent recipient of a State California Department of Justice grant award that specifically funds tobacco enforcement efforts for the city. It goes on to state that the city council should enact any type of -- if the city council enacts any flavored tobacco prohibition, there are sufficient resources to support and implement this. This is killing.
Finish your thought, go ahead.
Oh, thank you so much. You can combine all the suicides, murders, car accidents, fentanyl, opioid deaths together. They pale in comparison to the 480,000 deaths related to smoking-related disease every year. This technology is a solution to the tobacco problem. This is modern-age clean nicotine delivery, and we need to keep it available for adult smokers.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cherry Lee. I'm a consumer who use flavored nicotine flavored products to say no to cigarettes. I oppose any ban on flavored tobacco products, but not sensible regulations, for I do agree, kids who do not smoke should not vape. As a consumer, I'm not here to argue about researchers or studies or science, but I am here to ask you a question. If you were to take away my flavored nicotine vapor products, are you prepared to look me in the eyes and tell me it is okay to go back to smoking? Is it okay for you to rob me of my hope for a healthier life, thereby condemning me possibly to a premature death? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, thanks for having everyone here today. My name's Dr. Jessica Sims. I'm a public health professional. I've been practicing in LA for approximately 20 years. I'm also a resident of the city of Los Angeles in David Ruse District. I'm here on behalf of the Heart Association in support of the elimination of the sale of tobacco, flavored tobacco products, all flavored tobacco products, in the city of Los Angeles. And when we think about the arguments and why we're having a debate even on this, it comes down to two things. We've got two distinct populations that are impacted by electronic cigarettes. There are the adults who are trying to stop smoking traditional combustible tobacco products, and there's the youth that have been addicted, become addicted to it because there is no federal regulation of this product, in part because of the business model of the electronic cigarette companies and the lack of oversight by the FDA in general, and -- may I?
Just finish your thought.
Okay. So, basically, unless we have true regulation and actual science and evidence that supports the thought.
Dr. Sims, sorry, I'm sorry. I'll let you finish your thought, but sorry. I have to give everybody one minute, or I'm going to have to give everybody else additional time, but thank you so much for coming in. But you can submit anything else you would like to the city clerk, and they could give us a copy. Thank you.
One in five -- one in five youth and flavors are what brings them into the addiction.
Thank you, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman Ru and committee members. My name is Catherine Shirley. I am president and CEO of World Management Solutions, Inc., and a board director with the American Heart Association. On behalf of our board, we are in full support of the end-of-sale of flavored tobaccos, including mint and menthol. Our board of directors is comprised of cardiologists, cardiac surgeons, health system administrators, corporate executives, and prominent community members. We have been eagerly waiting since this motion's been on the floor about a year ago. Align with the county of Los Angeles, strong policies ending the sale of flavored tobacco products in the city can protect youth from accessing flavored and cheap tobacco products. Flavors, menthol in particular, have been historically used as a tool to target and hook our youth. It was most egregiously done with menthol in our African-American communities where disproportionate rates of cardiovascular disease and health are happening.
Thank you, thank you. If you could state your name first.
Good afternoon, members of the Health Committee. My name is Myra Contreras, and I am a nursing student at West Coast University in North Hollywood, and I am also a resident of the LA city. The easy availability of menthol cigarettes, flavored cigars, flavored hookah, and candy e-cigarettes flavors is causing an increase in youth tobacco of the -- and youth tobacco use of epic proportion. During 2017 to 2018 alone, e-cigarette use rose by 78% in high school students and 48% in middle school students. It's estimated that every day, more than 3,500 high school students started using e-cigarettes. All flavored tobacco products should be removed from the market to reduce their appeal to the youth. I, on behalf of the American Heart Association, support ending of the sale of all flavored tobacco products in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Health Committee. My name is Marissa Neville. I'm also a nursing student at West Coast University. The human brain is still in development at age 18. As a result, younger adults are much more sensitive to nicotine and can feel dependent sooner than older adults. All flavored tobacco products should be removed from the market to reduce their appeal to youth. I, on behalf of the American Heart Association, support ending of the sale of tobacco products in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Tomas Torisis, Executive Director for the American Academy of Pediatrics in Southern California. I represent over 1,500 pediatricians, and I'm here in the best interest of our youth. We are in strong support of you drafting an ordinance to prohibit the sales of all flavored tobacco products, one that is as strong as the one drafted by the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, one that did not have any restrictions, exemptions, and that it included menthol. Flavors are trapping youth, and that causes long-term effects on addiction. In 1975, there were -- in '75, there was 29% of high school students that were smoking, and it took 41 years of public health efforts to bring down that to 3% in 19 -- in 2018, I'm sorry. And now we are at 29% of high school students actually consuming vaping products. We appreciate your leadership, and we support your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Yaneth Rodriguez, and I'm here as a resident of the city of Los Angeles. I live in District 9 in City Councilmember Price's district, and I'm here to urge you to pass a comprehensive -- or to draft a comprehensive ordinance that restricts flavors in all tobacco products, including menthol cigarettes. No single product contributes more to the death and disease caused by tobacco used more than menthol cigarettes. As we know, menthol products make smoking cessation more difficult and are disproportionately marketed to vulnerable populations. I'm also aware that after the Canadian ban happened in Canada, the menthol ban, there was actually -- menthol smokers were pushed or motivated to quit smoking, so I want to remind you that this can actually help increase health equity in the city, so do please consider passing an ordinance that's comprehensive and includes all flavors, including menthol cigarettes. Thank you.
Thank you, and I really appreciate everyone adhering to the one-minute rule. I'm going to call the next five. Brenda Acevedo, Clarence Moore, Amanda Staples, Roy Brown, and Raj Dillon. I'm also going to call John Dixon and Mark Carroll. Do we have a handheld mic? You know, while we're getting the handheld, can some -- sir. Why don't we have someone in the back? Come on up first. Oh, we got the mic.
I'm Reverend Clarence Moore, and I'm a resident of the city of Los Angeles. I am here to appeal to you to ban menthol sales in the city of Los Angeles, and also I reckon I am happy to hear that you're drafting an ordinance that would ban all flavored cigarettes or flavored things in the city. Thank you very much.
I'm going to call Yvette Adam McDowell. Oh, it's Yvette McDowell, I think that was a misprint, and Terry Blevins. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to talk. My name's Roy Brown. I'm the National Director of the VET organization, and I'm here to talk against this menthol. I think that it should have been banned a long time ago, smoking completely in the city of Los Angeles, but I actually start somewhere, and probably with peer groups, instead of putting it directly on menthol, which means that it will affect the black minorities a lot more. a lot more than any other group. And rather than going to jail, I think that it should be assessed that you put peer groups together and have these people, rather than get tickets, to go to a peer group to talk about smoking and to help them to be able to stop smoking. Thank you.
Good seeing you, Roy, I didn't recognize you. We also have Philip Gardner and Sam Nieto, as well as Carol McGruder. If you hear your name, come on up, stand in line.
Hi, good afternoon, Amanda Staples with the American Heart Association. We are excited to see this report come back. We are in favor of a comprehensive policy that ends the sale of all flavored tobacco products. We are encouraged by the comments that we are hearing thus far. This is an extremely important note. We all know in this room that smoking kills. Tobacco is the reason for that. E-cigarettes, flavored hookah, cigarets, these are all tobacco products. We are asking that flavors, that flavored tobacco products be ended here in the city of Los Angeles. We have a comprehensive policy in the county, so we have all these pockets across the region that do not sell these products. We would like to see the city of LA lead the charge, be bold, and end this in the largest city in the Los Angeles region, so that we have a region that is on board with seeing this youth tobacco epidemic end. And also, talk about how menthol has been used as the number one flavor all of these years as well. They deserve that health as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Raj Dillon. I'm here representing Breathe L.A., a nonprofit organization focused on lung health and air quality issues. Breathe L.A. encourages you, the LA City Council, to take bold leadership in ending the sale of all flavored tobacco products. At Breathe L.A., we provide educational programming throughout our city and county. We have made presentations stressing the horrific health impacts of flavored tobacco products to over 1,200 community members, including teachers, parents, students, and law enforcement. We have seen from every angle the devastating impact that flavored tobacco has had on our residents, especially the most vulnerable among us. The tobacco industry continues to push flavored products, and as a result, many youth become addicted to nicotine, which has disastrous health effects, including harming brain development. As a city, we have a choice. We can continue to kowtow to big tobacco, or we can put the health of our residents first. I urge you to protect our children and the sale of flavored tobacco now. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members, my name is Mark Carroll. I'm CEO of the Emphysema Foundation of America, which urges you to take bold action and end the sale of all flavored tobacco products, including menthol, hookah, and 21 and over, tobacco shops in the city of Los Angeles. Tobacco use is a major cause of emphysema and COPD. I'm here today because I don't want you to think, as many vaping advocates and casual users state, that vaping is much safer than smoking. It is not. The fine particles delivered by e-cigarettes are similar in size and concentration to tobacco smoke, and although composition differs, the deposits of particles, they deposit the particles in the same patterns on the lungs. And while there is not a wide body of research on vaping due to its recent rise in interest, a number of recent studies have tied vaping to COPD and other lung diseases, for instance, e-cigarette exposure. Well, I'll just say this, past week, a study in the American Journal of Respiratory and Critical Care Medicine stated very clearly vaping is not any safer than tobacco smoking. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is John Dixon. I'm a former chief police and past president of the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executive. I'm taking a little different approach because I want to talk about the unintended consequences of bad policies that exist. One of the things I want to say first, that New York City took a look at all of this and decided not to ban menthol cigarettes because they were concerned about another Eric Gardner, they were concerned about how that would create another disproportionate contact within the black and brown communities, so they decided not to include menthol in it because they were worried about what's gonna happen. And the things that has happened across the country, the zero tolerance, the stop and frisk, and we tend to label this the new stop and frisk because it's one more reason that police will go in and create contact within those communities that will create other issues of concern. I understand the health issues, I'm not here to debate that one way or the other, but I think it's time that we sit down at the table and we put this back into the community, talk with our faith base, talk with our other leaders within the community, and sit down and talk and come up with a solution that'll make-
Thank you. I want to also call Hector Verdugo, Mike Merklin, and Miguel Melgoza.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Yvette McDowell. As a retired Assistant City Prosecutor and member of the Law Enforcement Action Partnership known as LEAP, we are here to advocate for criminal justice and drug policy reforms. While we share your concerns about the danger of vaping, particularly youth usage, I'm very concerned about the unintended consequences if a flavored ban includes a ban on menthol cigarettes. Even if such a ban would not criminalize youth, we know from experience that such bans can and do lead to unnecessary interactions between law enforcement and communities of colors. This legislation may seem race neutral, but menthol cigarettes are disproportionately favored by African-American people by 80% among those who smoke and other marginalized communities. History has taught us that simply increasing enforcement efforts to include menthol cigarettes will only lead to broader problems with long-term negative effects while not stopping people from smoking.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. My name is Sammy O'Nieto. I am a disabled veteran who served my country proudly. While I'm supportive of the proposed ban on vaping, I am against the ban on menthol cigarettes. I understand the rationale behind the banning of vaping products due to the recent deaths that have occurred across our country. Although I do feel this may be perceived as an infringement on some of the citizens' rights, I feel extremely, extreme situations call for extreme measures at times. With that being said, I think any attempt to ban menthol cigarettes would be a disaster for the Latino community and African-American community, as well as for law enforcement community. At the time when community tensions seemed to be on the decline, let's not put the city's law enforcement officers in a compromising position by asking them to enforce policy that will no doubt eventually be viewed as discriminatory. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, I'm Dr. Philip Gardner with the Tobacco Related Disease Research Program, University of California, Office of the President. I'm also co-chair of the African-American Tobacco Control Leadership Council. Let's be clear that menthol cigarettes are the main killer of black folks. Giving an exemption to menthol, giving exemption to the main killer, it is not discriminatory to take these cigarettes off the market. It was discriminatory, the predatory marketing that was done to get them so widely used. The criminalization that has been talked about, there have been over 221 cities in the United States that have adopted flavor restrictions, there has not been one arrest for possession of these products. The exemption for adult stores was disastrous in Oakland, where we went from three adult stores to over 52 today. We're trying to change it. At bottom, the best thing that this council can do for the health of LA is to restrict the sale of flavored tobacco products across the board. Thank you very much for your time.
I'm gonna call Brenda Acevedo, Daniel Hernandez, Bobby Pelletieri, Bobby Pelletieri.
Hi, good afternoon, Councilmembers. I'm Carol McGruder, and I'm the other co-chair of the African-American Tobacco Control Leadership Council. We work, we're California-based, and we work all over the country in getting Newport cigarettes in particular out of the black community. We work to save the lives of the 45,000 black people who die every year in this country from tobacco-induced diseases, including every single one of my brothers and sisters back there with their t-shirts on saying, "Leave menthol in." In the past 20 years, a million black people have died from menthol cigarettes. That is unacceptable. When Newport's was giving out free cigarettes to children in our community, there was no one there to protect them, and some of those people might be in this audience today who've been addicted for their whole lives. California has declared that by the year 2035, we will be completely smoke-free in this state. There are resources that are being poured into our communities to address the social determinants of health. This is not a single item, this is part of a big picture, a big plan, to give our people the support they need to get off of these deadly products.
Thank you.
And I have pictures of black children smoking hookah-
You can pass up, you can give it to the clerk.
-that I would like you to see because hookah is not about culture-
Thank you.
-it's about commercial and dollars.
I appreciate it. If we could stick to a minute so we could give everyone an equal opportunity?
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Excuse me. My name is Miguel Melgoza, and I'm here representing the Latino Educational Fund. In 2004, our president, Alberto Sanchez, also founded the Latino Diabetes Association in honor of his father who passed away due to diabetes. I'm sure you're aware of the correlation between smoking and diabetes. According to the CDC, smokers are 30 to 40% more likely to develop type 2 diabetes than non-smokers. Unfortunately, through the course of my professional and personal life, I have also learned firsthand about the dangers of smoking in ways that really hit home with my family as well. This new trend of vaping and the use of e-cigarettes is doing nothing more than creating a new nationwide health epidemic that we literally cannot afford to see. To date, 39 deaths have been reported nationwide. I humbly ask you to take a stand against the seduction of our youth through clever marketing and instant access. Please take this opportunity to stand with the Latino community and say no more to e-cigarettes and vaping, while taking the proper measures to ensure that deadly products like e-cigarettes gets off the streets. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm gonna call Gio Galaraza, Jorge Nunez, Edward Leirs, and Mutaz Arifai, I apologize, Mutaz Arifai.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. My name is Hector Verdugo, I'm the Associate Executive Director at Homeboy Industries. I'm here today in support of vaping ban in the city of Los Angeles. As a local advocate and community leader, I'm always focused on the well-being of our most vulnerable, including our youth. Banning these deadly vaping products is a step in the right direction. I applaud you for your courage and your leadership on this issue. A day in and day out, I work with clients who are trying to reintegrate back into society. As you proceed to tackle this issue, please be mindful as to not to create a new class of criminals based around an underground economy of non-vaping products. I know it's a delicate balancing act, but I trust you will find a solution that best serves our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Bobby Pelletieri. I manage one of the largest hookah lounges in Southern California. We have about 400 to 450 people at any given time. We've been open for the last 20 years with zero citations. I have around 70 employees in my establishment. I am with some of the people here, we are heavily against vape. I am asking for a hookah lounge consumption, onsite consumption exemption for lounges. You're talking about thousands of employees, hundreds of businesses, it's just not right to take away people's personal freedom. You can, the city attorney's report talks about how some business owners might be engaged in shady activity. I don't know what to say about that, but there's options. You can grandfather people in, there's plenty of lounges, this was never an issue until vaping came along. Please exclude hookah lounges. The state has a case against Juul right now. They were the problem, not hookah lounges. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna call Keaton Quatch, Jennifer Speck, and Crystal Sanchez.
Good afternoon, dear Councilmembers. My name is Gio Galarza. I am the CEO of Hollywood Latino, and I am also the founder of Love All Homeless Los Angeles, which is them. We are a volunteer organization that focuses on providing food and resources to our homeless population while treating them with dignity and respect. I am here today with over 25 of my co-volunteers group who feel so strongly about this issue as I do. Would you all please stand up or raise your hands? Thank you very much. We are here today to thank you for having the courage and leadership to tackle this very complex issue about vaping. We know that this ban may seem controversial, but considering there has been over 39 documented deaths across the country, it is the right thing to do. There is no time to wait while these companies pretend to act as if they are getting a handle on this issue. One death is one too many. These companies cannot be trusted due to the fact to do the right thing, so we must rely on you to set the policy to place and to protect our communities.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm gonna call some names again and repeat. Terry Blevins, Mike Merklin, Daniel Hernandez, Jorge Nunez, Edward Leirs, and Lorraine Jackson. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Speck, and I'm with SCLC. I want to thank you folks for allowing me to express myself. I want you folks to know that I am totally against this idea of banning menthol cigarettes here in Los Angeles. We're not incompetent, we're not stupid, we are human beings just like you folks are. Shame, shame, shame on you folks. How many more chains are you going to keep throwing at us? We don't need to see any more policing in our streets or our neighborhoods, because now cigarettes are illegal to sell. Just because you make something illegal, it doesn't make something go away. You don't know, you don't live in my hood, you don't know my pain, nor do you know my struggle. And by the way, who's policing you guys?
I'm gonna call a few more, I'm gonna call a few more names. Lorraine Jackson, Annette Powers, Eric McIndez, and Dominique Brown.
I'm Lorraine Jackson. You know, we keep hearing about how important it is for the police and us to have good relationships with each other. Yeah, that's important enough, but if you make it illegal to sell menthols, you are going to make it just harder to do. When we see police on the streets, it's already make, it already makes us tense, just because we know the history, and the history isn't always pretty. Now you're going to open the door to some of us, to some in our community, getting asked about their cigarettes? No, that's just not smart. We don't need any reason for the police to be harassing folks, my folks, and creating unintended consequences. So please, there's no reason to even consider a ban on selling menthols. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Daniel Morales. I'm the founder of Youth Empowerment through Scholastic's Sporting Community Service. We serve communities at Echo Park, MacArthur Park, Wesley, Pico Union. I think you there in that city is because you elected, you have a lot of power in this world, not in this city, in the whole world. And I ask you please to use that power in behalf of the good decision for the people. Don't start a new cancer in our community. Please vote smart and ban all these e-cigarettes, how they call. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Dominique Brown, and I'm from SCLC. I'm here to talk about the attempting of banning menthol cigarettes from being sold. There is a great example of the government trying to create another level of inequality. I understand the seriousness in saving lives and people's health. Isn't that the fact? In case, why not ban all tobaccos and not just menthols, which African-American people smoke? As far as white folks, they smoke camels and marbles. Why aren't you guys banning those as well? That's not even fair for our community. Focus on the real problem at hand right now, which is e-cigarettes and vaping, which the kids are doing today. Thank you, have a good day.
I'm gonna call Annette, Annette G. Powers, Lacretia Heron, Eric McIndez, Michael Gurgis, and James Brown. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Anique Powers, and I work for, I'm working for Alfakar as a trade marketing rep, which is a hookah tobacco importer based in Paramount. I cover the LA area, and I'd just like to make a couple points that state that what you see and will see today are a small subset of businesses in my area, and they're my customers. You could hear over 100 stories today like what you will hear today. I know there are a lot of questions about so-called mini or miniature hookah devices. We do not recognize these devices as part of what we're defending. We would be very happy for the city to ban hookahs that are under 12 inches tall, for example, and I think it'd be extremely difficult to smoke through anything smaller than that. And so-called e-hookahs are not hookahs at all. They're e-cigarettes pretending to be hookahs and would be captured by any cigarette regulation. And finally, I'd just like to confirm that the hookah tobacco that is sold by our company, it cannot be purchased anywhere aside from a retail, retail shop, and it cannot be used in any other way except via hookah pipe.
I'm gonna call, also call Darnell Brown, Majdi Karadesh, Sheri Sanders, Mary Danasian. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Eric McIndez from Legacy Lounge in Mid-City District 10. My lounge is the very first lounge in the LA County that is owned and operated by African-American women. My lounge is a safe space for a diverse group. I would say that lounges in general are safe social spaces for various minority groups. For example, my lounge holds a poetry night where customers come for hookah and listen to and recite poetry. I'm now planning an LGBTQ night for the community. My customers come in maybe once a week or less. It's a social thing, not a daily addicting habit. It's nothing like cigarettes and vapes. Most of my customers don't even smoke vapes or cigarettes. I'm aware of so-called e-cigarettes on the market, they're not really hookahs, they're just cigarettes that they slap on to name hookah. And also, I do age checks at the door, so no one under the age 21 is allowed in my establishment. Thank you.
This is last call for Terry Blevins. Terry Blevins? Go ahead.
Yes, how you doing? My name is James Brown. Let's see, I'm a voter of Los Angeles.
Let's see, I'm a voter of Los Angeles. I'm a resident, and I want to paint a picture for you. And the picture is this. You have a white man walk into a store and buy his traditional cigarettes, Marbles. You have a black man, where since y'all banning menthols, have to go into a back alley or somewhere and buy his cigarettes, like Eric Garner. And this'll happen, liable to die, just like Eric Garner. But you have a white man who run off into the sunset, and there would be no kind of repercussions or nothing. You guys are bringing back discrimination while the whole world is, excuse me, speaking for equality. Thank you.
I'm also gonna call again Mike Merklin, Jose Nunez, Mutaz Arifai.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Majdi Karadeh. I am the Director of Sales for Fumari. I'm asking for a hookah carve-out because hookah is a cultural thing that's been a part of our lives as immigrants that came to this country from years ago. We came here, it's our culture. It's not something that we do daily. It is a, it's a social occasion, not an intoxicating addiction. It is the key staple for our social-cultural lives here in this country. It will be a shame to ban it because of the carry-ons of vaping and cigarette companies. Hookah is nothing like cigarettes. It's nothing like vape. It should not be included in this ordinance. Hookah is not the issue here. Vape is the issue. So we need to look at controlling vape. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sheri. Sheri Sanders, and I am with SCLC. I want to talk to you about the unintended consequences if you force a ban on menthol cigarettes. The example of consequences would be Eric Garner, which he should ring a bell to you. He's the man that lost his life in New York because of a bad run-in with the police. You're going to be axing for trouble if you do this ban. If you prohibit the stores from selling menthol cigarettes. I have a young son, and I do not want him to become another Eric Garner. Thank you.
I'm gonna call again Edward Lares, Keaton Kowach, and Crystal Sanchez.
How y'all doing? I'm Darnell, Darnell Brown. I smoke menthols. So, you know, I heard y'all banning menthol cigarettes, right? So, I wrote this down, give me a second.
Sure.
I don't think it's cool to target people in my, in my community from smoking menthol cigarettes if y'all ain't gonna ban them all. I get that y'all wanna keep the cigarettes out of the kids' hands, but if you're twenty-one and older, you still be able to smoke how you wanna smoke. And I don't know how the younger kids is getting it, so I don't know.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I appreciate the chance to speak. My name is Lacretia Heron, and I'm here in resident, I'm a resident here in LA. And I'm very worried about the effects of the menthol tobacco selling prohibition if it's something you pass into law. We've seen the results of aggressive politic tactics in the community before, and especially when it comes to enforcing tobacco laws, like it did with Eric Gardner. That was a tragedy, and we don't need situations like that to ever happen again. So why would you give the cops more reason to be looking for someone selling menthols and breaking another law we just don't need here in our community? That makes no sense. We need to be treated a little better than that, and we want more respect than that. And we don't need another menthol. We don't need a menthol ban. Please don't pursue looking into that option. Thank you.
I'm also gonna call Eileen Gutierrez, Kayla Gonzalez, Tanya Orellano, Larissa Gomez, Rosemary Olvera, and Keishan Powell.
Hi, my name is Mary Danassian, and I have a hookah retail business in LA City. I only sell hookah and hookah products. My customers either come into my shop or order online. I am proud, I'm particularly proud of my record when it comes to age control. We have a third-party ID checker on our website and also at our store. I ask you to please exempt hookah from the flavor ban. Thank you.
I'm gonna do a last call for Mike Merklin, Jose Nunez, Mutaz Arifai, Edward Lares, and Keaton Kowach. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Rosemary Olvera. I am a student of Vista Charter Middle School and a resident of Los Angeles, California. I'm here to discuss the issue of flavored tobacco products. According to an article by CDC published on November eighth, two thousand and nineteen, about two thousand youth under eighteen years of age smoked their first cigarette, and the numbers keep rising. Nicotine is addictive chemical that is in these products that cause addictive behavior. These young users don't realize the harm of nicotine because the flavors are there to mask the taste of it. The sweet flavoring and bright packages are to capture attention towards young kids and young adults, and not to mention that these products are sold for about a dollar or less, which make it easier for them to get their hands on and enjoy. I would like to, I would like to see a change and decreasing number of young children and adults using tobacco products. We are the future, and this problem needs to be solved now. Thank you, council members, for your time.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Larissa. I am a student of Vista Charter Middle School, a resident of Los Angeles, and a youth advocate for Los Angeles Youth First Tobacco Coalition. I'm here today to inform you guys about the issue of flavored tobacco products. To begin with, in general, vaping is a big thing in LA. I see many people being affected by nicotine. In my community, I have seen how people are constantly vaping, but what they aren't aware of is that the chemicals in vape or e-cigs can cause the popcorn lung. The popcorn lung has proven to damage lung tissues and is caused from being exposed to certain harmful chemicals. If you aren't aware, vaping with or without nicotine is legal in the US. Nobody is stopping the youth from being affected. Nicotine is a brain poison, especially when your brain is still developing. In two thousand and eighteen, over twenty percent of high school students reported having used e-cigs in the last thirty days. According to KYCC Coordinator Lydia Lissing, more than fifteen thousand flavors are sold and are targeted towards the youth. This proves that we need to make a change. Thank you, council members, for your time, and I hope that this issue is terminated.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Tanya. I am an eighth-grade student at Vista Charter Middle School and a resident of Los Angeles and a youth advocate for the Los Angeles Youth First Tobacco Coalition. The tobacco industry is marketing candy-like flavors such as bubble gum, mango, cotton candy, and cumy berry, just to name a few, in an effort to target young people and get them hooked on their nicotine products. Flavored tobacco is affecting my community and I. I've seen so many people in my neighborhood vaping. Data shows that eighty-one percent of kids ages twelve to seventeen in the US have tried flavored nicotine products. There have been one hundred and two Californians that have history with vaping and that have been hospitalized for severe lung damage and breathing problems, which is the nicotine inside the vape that causes them to have damage. Yet, no one's doing anything about the situation of youth and young adults being harmed by tobacco products. I am urging you to create legislation that would help reduce the number of students that vape or use e-cigarettes. I do not want to see them, I do not want to see my friends or family members falling for these harmful products and seeing them get hurt. Thank you, council members, for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Kayla Gonzalez, and I am here to speak on behalf of Amy Alvaring, who could not join us today. I am a student of Vista Charter Middle School, a resident of Los Angeles, and a youth advocate for Los Angeles Youth First Tobacco Coalition. I am here to talk to you about the issue of flavored tobacco products and how it became a problem to the community. One of the problems is that e-cigarettes are easy to obtain and can easily fall into the hands of an adolescent. These e-cigarettes also contain a solution that have flavors that appeal to children such as peppermint, bubble gum, pina colada, and chocolate. With these flavors, it tempts kids into trying e-cigarettes and creating an addiction, which causes serious damage to their lungs and health. Lastly, all of these flavors that people can buy also hides the harsh chemicals within the cigarettes. Because of this, I hope you take this into account and help us make a change for the sake of our future. Thank you, council members, for your time.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Eileen. I am a student of Vista Charter Middle School, a resident of Los Angeles, and a youth advocate for Los Angeles Youth First Tobacco Coalition. I am here to inform you about the issue of tobacco products and my encounters with these products. One way I have encountered these products influencing the young is that one time I was at a party, and this girl who was thinking on buying a Juul unflavored nicotine, I asked her why. She told me that it was forty dollars for Juul starter kit, and the price was very economical compared to what they are usually. I was surprised to hear that schools, in schools, kids themselves are selling these products for a much lower price than you would get them anywhere else. Juul is sold in stores and are also sold online, making it easier for teens to access it. This is a very pressing issue, as I have shown today. Thank you, council members, for your time, and this is an issue that has to be fixed immediately.
Thank you. And what school are you from again?
Vista Charter Middle School.
Charter, I, I wanna thank all the students of Charter Middle School. Thank you, thank you for coming. Thank you.
Mi nombre es Carmen Estrada. Yo vivo en Los Angeles.
Hello, my name is Carmen Estrada, and I am a resident of LA City.
Yo estoy apoyando la ordenanza propuesta que finaliza la venta de productos de tabaco con sabor a dulce, incluido los cigarrillos ventilados en la ciudad de Los Angeles.
I am in full support of the proposed ordinance ending the sale of candy and sweet-flavored tobacco products, including menthol cigarettes, in the city of LA, and encourage you, your full support.
Como saben fumar, es la principal causa de muerte evitable en California, y los fabricantes de tabaco están atacando agresivamente a los adolescentes en las comunidades de color.
As you know, smoking is the number-one cause of preventable death in California, and tobacco manufacturers are aggressively targeting teens and communities of color.
Como la ciudad más poblada de Estados Unidos, Los Angeles se convertirá en un líder al salvar...
Please give another minute. Give another minute. Go ahead.
Como la ciudad más grande de los, de los Estados Unidos, Los Angeles se convertirá en un líder en salvar vidas al evitar que los niños obtengan estos productos de tabaco. Muchas gracias.
As the most populated city in America, LA will become a leader in saving lives by preventing kids from getting hooked on candy and sweet-flavored products. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I gave that extra time for the translation. I'm gonna call Michael Gergis for the last time, and also Mary Danassian, Kristen Powell, Rosemary Olvera, Roshan Sanders, Neve Donahue, Sheila Jones, and Jennifer Calais. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Keishan Powell, and I'm a twenty-year-old youth volunteer of the Los Angeles Youth First Tobacco Coalition, and also a student at LACC, Los Angeles City College. I help as a youth decoy for KYCC's Young Adult Purchase Survey Report, and our report has found about this year's forty, forty-seven point five of tobacco product retailers in Los Angeles sell tobacco, tobacco products such as Juul and menthol cigarettes to those who underage without valid ID. I can personally attest to being sold Juuls and Newport cigarettes when I have asked for them in the majority of stores. I've helped to, to collect young data, purchase, young data purchased. In many cases, I am not asked for age or ID. With our success rate of forty-seven point five percent for underage sales to myself and my fellow youth decoys in this city, I would like the city to know that something must be done to limit access to appealing flavored products in order to protect our future generation of youth. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Roshan. Kids these days aren't smoking menthol cigarettes. They are using e-cigarettes and vaping devices. That's what we should be talking about, and that's what we should be banning because they are not smoking menthol cigarettes. So please say no to this menthol ban. Let's protect our youth by creating an age restriction so they cannot purchase until they are adults. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council. My name is Jennifer Calais, and I currently work at a hookah lounge. I would really appreciate if the council would consider exempting hookah from this ban. An important factor that I want to bring up is that hookah tobacco has always been manufactured with flavored molasses, meaning that it'll always be flavored. We simply cannot take out the flavoring in the tobacco because the flavoring comes from natural ingredients. If this ban goes through, the hookah industry and community will be decimated. This is why we should focus on the enforcement of the bad actors in the industry that aren't complying with the laws at hand. All those that are following the rules should not have to be reprimanded for those that choose to look the other way when it comes to regulations. Anyone who is careless about their responsibilities should be shut down. Thank you.
I'm gonna also call Sheila Jones, Olivia Barber, Reverend William Smart, Ashaf Hadad, and I think this might be a mistake, EA, if someone signed up as EA. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon, and thank you. My name is Sheila, from SCLC. I'd first like to say that I am in agreements with the ban of vaping and for the e-cigarettes. I am against the idea of the city looking into banning the selling, or the sales of the menthol cigarettes. It's funny how we want to save lives, however, you're not in for the ban of all cigarettes. So cigarettes will still be legal, but not menthol. This is people's choice and people's rights. We do not have the right or the ability to just say that you guys get to not have menthol, and we're gonna keep Marlboro. I feel it's very unfair, so don't take away the rights of our adults and our black and brown folks who smoke. Let's create an age restriction that minimizes kids from purchasing and save lives in that way. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Neve Donahue, and I own a female-run hookah lounge. I agree with everything being said, but would like to reemphasize some points. The main reason to not include hookah in the flavor ban is that it is a fundamentally different product than all other tobacco and nicotine products. People do not typically use it every day. They use it infrequent, infrequently, which makes it very different than cigarettes and vapes. This is a highly respected social ritual and not a quick fix. It is not easily accessed by minors. The device is cumbersome and big, heavy. It takes ten to twenty minutes to fully set up and get the hookah started. I guarantee that these students here today have never seen their peers smoking a hookah on campus. These are the reasons to treat it differently to products that have caused the problems the committee wants to fix. We are asking to please exempt hookah from this flavor ban. Thank you.
So I'm gonna call again Mary Danassian, and Nader Suliman, Pastor KW Tullos, Jamie Rojas, George Aho.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm Pastor William Smart, President and CEO of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference. You've heard some of my members who are not standing up, who've already said, there's an injustice here. We are very much concerned about the health issues. We always have. Black folks are eighty percent of those that are, that smoke menthol. But yet, you cannot deny in America, one group something that another group is getting. We cannot deny, even though there are health ramifications, still, people have a right to smoke. We have to inculcate into our children that vaping, hookah, and smoking is wrong, but to cut menthol, something that is, that African-Americans have been accustomed to, is wrong, unless you cut everything. And we start cutting everything, cut alcohol and everything, for those who are so concerned about our health, cut alcohol, cut everything. If you're not gonna cut one thing, don't cut, if you're not gonna cut it all, don't cut one thing. That's the discrimination on this issue.
Thank you, Reverend. If I could, if the audience members, I would appreciate if we keep the noise to a minimum. That way, we could continue on with the hearing, and we could get as many people possible to speak.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to come in and speak. My name's Arthur Rargus. I'm with the Southern Christian Leadership Conference. I just wanna say, if you're really trying to go after what the, what the kids are smoking and what's getting them hooked, the ordinance is going after the wrong thing. Because it's, it, kids don't smoke menthol cigarettes. They do use e-cigarettes and vaping devices. But menthol cigarettes are not, you know, in the news. You know who does smoke menthol cigarettes? African-Americans and black and brown youth and minorities within our communities here in Los Angeles. We're adults, and we make that choice. So why do you want to take the choice away from adults, doing in the name of helping the kids? Thank you.
Thank you for refraining. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Good evening. Reverend KW Tullos, President of the Baptist Ministers Conference of Los Angeles and Southern California. I have here letters from churches, from the mother of Eric Gardner, who I was involved with, and this is how I got, so if I can pass this to someone. I have a letter from each of you today, and I'm here with clergy from throughout Los Angeles. Many of them could not be here, but they are monitoring this. I just want you to know the unintended consequences are real, something that you must address. We are very concerned. You including menthol in this ban is discrimination. Eighty percent of African-Americans choose menthol. If you're gonna ban anything, ban it all. It is unjust, I said unjust, to expect communities of colors to choose between the greater public health protection and the basic civil rights. I hear everyone from each side today, and I need you all to hear folks from each side. It is a health epidemic, but the reality is, the unintended consequences is something that we cannot accept, and we should, as the community, really look into... really look into this and make sure that this is something that's not going to appropriately discriminate African-American communities.
Thank you, Reverend. Thank you. Please, if you could, hold your applause. I'm gonna also call Brenda Acevedo, Sean Tenaza, Andy, Roshan Hollins, and Maz Gomo.
I'm George. I'm from Hookah Fina. We manufacture hookah products. I fully agree that tobacco products should be marketed responsibly and kids should not be smoking and vaping. I think we all agree here. It is however clear that hookah was never the problem, and still is it. I'm surprised that hookah is being placed in the same category as vape and cigarettes. It's a cumbersome device which requires patience to assemble and prepare. It's just way too big to take into a school. It is a cultural piece by the Middle East, smoked by adults only. When a hookah's lit, it usually means that, you know, it's time for the adults to sit around and socialize while the kids go play. They don't smoke. It's always been flavored. It's not considered hookah tobacco if it's not, so it has to be flavored. And for the nearly twenty years I've been in this business, the hookah industry has kept a very close community, and we're all in agreement that, you know, we should have age restrictions, responsive marketing, and FDA regulations. We've never had a hookah epidemic. So I consider, you know, for hookah to be exempted from this ban. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman. Council members, my name is Jaime Rojas with the National Association Tobacco Outlets. We're here against any type of ban on flavors. We ask you to focus on the main issue, which the FDA has stated: illegal vape and illegal THC. Your own tobacco control department has issued, a report just came out, ten percent are using e-cigarettes in high school, one point seven of high schoolers are using combustible cigarettes, point four percent are using smokeless tobacco. Let's use common sense policies step by step of higher penalties, more fees on TRLs, electronic point sales systems. The eight percent cities in California that have passed something is not working. Oakland, San Francisco, San Leandro, Alameda have shown that flavor bans of any type do not work. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashraf Hadad, Beth Reconati, and Janet Kim.
Hello, council members, and thank you for having us here today. My name is Nader Solomon, a hookah lounge owner in San Diego, California. I would like to ask for an exemption for the sale of hookah tobacco and operation of hookah lounges in L.A. Hookah is not the issue. It has been around for centuries, and it has never been questioned before this heavily in a ban until electronic cigarettes were grouped into the definition of what a flavored tobacco product is. The main issue at hand is vaping, not hookah tobacco. I feel as if there are two main reasons for the flavored tobacco ban. The recent deaths due to vitamin E acetate and illegal black market THC oils, and second, the recent epidemic of teenagers using salt nicotine vapes such as Juuls and puff bars. If I may clarify, you cannot smoke a hookah at school. It is nearly impossible. You cannot sneak a hookah in your room while your parents are home, and you cannot put a hookah in your pocket. The average setup takes twenty minutes to prepare. So I ask you, council members, to carve out for hookah tobacco and to target the real issue at hand, not the whole definition of what a flavored tobacco is. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, council members. My name is Marie Garcia. I'm an active member with I Love L.A. Homeless, and also I am part of L.A. Inc. Alliance Club. After hearing the other testimony today, I would like to also ask that you proceed with caution when considering banning anything that is outside the scope of vaping due to the potential perceived harassment that some members of the committee might feel. I would hate to see an unintended consequence arise due to this. It is apparent that a real fear exists within the African-American community, but also Latino community and Asian community. As it relates to enforcement, and we would like, actually, my grips would like, to ask that you consider strictly banning vaping because it is the form of usage that is directly tied and connected to the recent deaths that have occurred here. It doesn't only affect African-Americans, Latinos, but all ethnicities. These deaths are more than one. Thank you.
I'm sorry, ma'am, what was your name again?
Marie Garcia.
Marie Garcia. I don't think I called your name, so if we could just, the people whose name's been called, please come. State your name first, please.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Sean Tenaza. I own Empire Hookah Lounge. December fifteenth marks our thirteen years of business, and within those thirteen years, we have zero violations. Today, we're very proud of that. I would also like to reassure the city that hookah is not a youth-oriented product. It is not convenient or portable or even possible to hide. It is a social ritual and requires some patience, while other nicotine-based products are about a quick fix. The FDA statistics confirm that compared to cigarettes and vapes and other tobacco products, youth experimentation with hookah is very low and shows no sign of growing. Hookah is not the problem. Vaping clearly is, and I'm here today to ask for an exemption on hookah. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna also call Roshan Hollins, calling Maz Goma again, and Giselle G., and Bob Habibi.
Good afternoon. I'm Maz Gomo from Hookah Junkie. And I own an exclusive hookah retail business in L.A., meaning that I do not sell any other tobacco product. Hookah users tend not to use other tobacco products. Since there is no relationship between hookah and other products, I don't stock cigarettes or vapes. My customers order online, and I also have a very strong age verification software that independently verifies customers' IDs. My customers also keep pipes in their homes and use hookah at home with their spouses or friends. I agree, it would be a huge shock if they find they can't buy anymore light-cutting out key aspects of the cultural expression, and of course, I would go out of business. I agree with others that it is a cultural, social ritual, not a quick fix. It has no place being regulated like cigarettes and e-cigarettes. Please do not ban hookah in the city. Thank you, guys.
State your name first, please.
My name is Roshan Hollins, and I appreciate you giving me a loud chance to speak this morning. Okay, I work security at Hibby's Hookah Lounge in Westwood, California, and we check IDs. Anyone who wants to have hookah or even sit in the hookah area in the venue or ass can say that if people want to come and just eat, they must sit in the area that's designed for which is a small section separated from the hookah. This is a really nice, safe place for our customers who are from all walks of life, in fact, from all over the world. We get a lot of celebration, too, at the hookah lounge. Hookah is a Middle Eastern tradition, but it is enjoyable by many different people who wants to social, enjoy itself. I've been working security in L.A. since the nineteen eighties, worked a lot different bars and clubs. Lounge where a man knows feels by far the most trouble-free space that works. Hookah is a good thing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'm gonna call Eric McKendays, Reverend Calvin Sauls, Primo Castro. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Beth Reconati. I'm a physician and a mother of three older adolescent children. I am here as a representative of PAVE, Parents Against Vaping, a national grassroots organization, and I want to urge you today to take the bold and necessary step to protect L.A. kids and families by clearing the market of flavored tobacco and e-cigarettes. We have made such tremendous strides in decreasing disease associated with traditional cigarettes through regulation, and yet now, with the proliferation of thousands of flavored products, kids as young as fifth grade are vaping at alarming rates. We heard earlier today how now there are all fifty states implicated in the lung disease associated with these cigarettes. Now is the time for L.A. to act before a new generation is hooked on these dangerous products. PAVE supports a comprehensive ban. Thank you very much for your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Janet. I own a hookah lounge in Northridge. I've been in business for fifteen years and also have never had a violation. I run a safe, adult-only venue where people come to socialize over hookah. Like others who have spoken, I'll be out of business if this ban includes hookah. I agree that cigarettes and vaping are a problem for the youth in America, but I cannot understand why my business and my customers must face a ban because of this. It would be a terrible impact on the social and cultural life of my customers. Hookah is nothing like cigarettes and e-cigarettes. It would be very unfair to take regulation designed to deal with the problems of cigarettes and vaping and cut and paste it onto hookah. The irony in this case would be that while hookah would be banned completely by flavor ban, regular cigarettes and e-cigarettes will keep on being sold. Thank you.
Get this last call for Olivia Barber, Ashraf Hadad, Brenda Acevedo, Andy, and Giselle G. Go ahead.
My name is Hysela Friedman, and I'm here representing Parents Against Vaping E-Cigarettes, PAVE, a national grassroots organization. I have two main concerns about flavored tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, the issue that brought me, as a mother of a sixteen and nineteen-year-old, to the table. One, flavors hook kids. Two, flavors mask tobacco-related health risks. Eight out of nineteen teenagers report they began vaping with flavors. More than sixty-six percent of kids who vape report they had no idea the devices contained nicotine, but one Juul pot is equivalent to twenty cigarettes. Juul also patented nicotine salt technology, which delivers huge amounts of nicotine more efficiently to the brain, making it even more highly addictive. The evidence is clear. Flavors attract kids to e-cigarettes, and the extraordinarily high levels of nicotine get kids addicted. I urge you to pass a flavor ban, including mint and menthol, with no exceptions. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, members of the Health Committee. My name is Brenda Acevedo, and I am a nursing student at West Coast University in North Hollywood campus. I'm also a resident of L.A. City. The easy availability of menthol cigarettes, flavored cigarettes, flavored hookah, and candy e-cigarette flavors is causing an increase in youth tobacco use of epic proportion. In a single sixty-minute hookah smoking session, smokers can inhale up to two hundred times the volume of smoke than from a single cigarette. Hookah smoke contains significant amounts of nicotine tar, heavy metals, carcinogens, and many chemicals that can cause clogged arteries and heart disease. All flavored tobacco products should be removed from the market to reduce their appeal to youth. I, on behalf of the American Heart Association, support ending the scale of all flavored tobacco products in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. I'm gonna call Pastor Joe Bailey and Saad Fati.
Hi, my name is Bobby. I own a hookah bar for the last twenty years. We're a twenty-one-and-over establishment. We only serve to adults, just like when you go to a bar. We employ seventy-five people. If this law passes, it would be devastating to me, my family, their families, all the hookah bar owners and their families. I urge you guys to, just like the state of Massachusetts did, they did a complete flavor ban, but consumption on the premises. Where, you know, you have security, you have a police officer, you show your ID. We're not putting all these people out of business. I urge you guys not to ban hookahs. What else was I gonna say? Yeah, just forgot, sorry.
No problem. Thank you.
It's just be devastating to a lot of families. You know, I understand the epidemic, but this has been part of our culture. We're Persian, and we've been smoking for hundreds and hundreds.
My name is Reverend Calvin Sauls, and I am with Community Health Councils, working in South Los Angeles as a faith-based community organizer and one of our faith leaders, you know, in the community, specifically working with the Healthy Kid Zone at Fremont High School. And today, we are here with several of our partners, you know, urging this ban because tobacco, no matter how we taste, is poisonous, and we believe that the ban on the use of tobacco is mutually exclusive around the criminalization of its use. We are all for not punishing the victim or those who are addicted, but we are challenging the production of it and the distribution of it. And so, on behalf of our children who continue to be addicted and trapped into this by flavors, including menthol, and the families who've been affected by this, you know, we stand in solidarity and say that our partners and our faith calls us, you know, to take this.
Thank you, Reverend. Thank you. State your name first.
My name's Andy Perkins. I'm the...
Andy, if you could, we didn't call your name yet. We gotta, I gotta do it within order, so if you could wait till your name is called.
You said Andy, I thought...
Oh, is that you? There wasn't Andy.
Somebody didn't put my last name when they signed me in.
Is it different, Andy? Well, go ahead, go ahead, Andy.
I'm the president of the Los Angeles Distribution Center for Coremark. I'm here representing over four hundred convenience store retailers and the employees that would be affected by a ban like this. C-stores have been notoriously doing a great job at stopping youth sale within them. Additionally, I represent over two hundred employees, my employees, that depend on the revenue generated from these products being banned. If passed, jobs will be lost. Tax-paying citizens will lose their jobs. I encourage the council to wait and not take action. That will impact the lives of the citizens until we receive guidance from the FDA. My retailers and employees rely on these products to feed their families. I feel that if we owe it to them to wait and reconsider this ban. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Primo Castro, Government Relations Director with the American Council Society Cancer Action Network. We are in full support of the report's findings to end the sale of all flavored tobacco products, including menthol, and without exemptions in the city of L.A. Specifically, we applaud Council Member Ofero's recognition of the epidemic the nation is facing as children are being addicted due to the sale of all flavored tobacco products, including menthol. Tobacco continues to be the leading cause of all preventable death in our nation. Hookah and e-cigarettes are not a safe alternative to cigarettes and other combustible tobacco products. ACS CAN supports passage of the ordinance without exemptions. This e-cigarette epidemic has been shamelessly promoted by the tobacco industry to youth across the country with over fifteen thousand flavors such as cotton candy, horchata, and jammies. These flavored tobacco products have been shamelessly targeted Native Americans, African-Americans, Latino, API, and the LGBT communities, which begins to target marketing and whiting existing health disparities. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Saad Fati. I own the first hookah cafe in California, Habibi Cafe, and I own the first hookah bar at the Four Seasons Hotel. I have been in business over twenty years. I employed over forty-three peoples between voice location. I serve hookah only to adults. I employ three security personnel all the time who checks IDs for everybody. One of them was here earlier, and he spoke to you guys. A flavored tobacco pan is a complete hookah pan, period. There is no unflavored hookah. I won't have a business anymore if hookah is included in this ban. I don't serve any alcohol to any of my customers. I'm often people that do not drink but want to socialize in an unalcoholic-free environment, listen to Middle Eastern music, and not deal with any drunkenness. My hookah is served in a three-foot water pipe like the one is here. Life was ancient tradition. I keep over fifty of these in my place.
Thank you. I'm gonna call Annie Teigen, Matt Safari, Dan Noel, and John Nader.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Joe Bailey. I'm with Peace Chapel Community Development Church, Nice District, Current Price. We're Current Price, and I'm here to point out the fact that in an emporium that I went to a couple months ago, it was made really clear that the, in spite of, in spite of the damage that the flavored tobacco, the flavored vaping is doing, there is also much damage being done by the menthol, and I just don't want that to be overlooked, that the menthol is also damaging in the vaping products. And we're concerned with not criminalizing or necessarily creating a problem with it, but just to point out the fact that we need to know what's included in the manufacturing of those vaping products and the menthol.
Thank you, Pastor. I'm also gonna call Arby, Ser Darian, Eric McKendays, and Annie Teigen again.
Hi, my name is Dan Noel, L.A. City resident, First District. I smoked cigarettes for thirteen years, and vaping is the only method that actually worked for me. The availability of flavors is the reason why it worked. And to me, this is an enforcement issue rather than a policy issue. There already is a ban in place for those under twenty-one. It's the state law. Let's enforce it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Matt Safari. I'm the marketing manager at Habibi Cafe, and I'd like to speak from our customers' perspective. I myself was a hookah consumer long before I was working for the lounge, and hookah is a social occasion that's been around for centuries. People do it on dates for business meetings or just meetups between their friends. It is enjoyed in a safe and social space that does not revolve around alcohol. that does not revolve around alcohol. Banning hookah would cut off the social life for thousands and thousands of people who don't go to bars or drink alcohol, specifically Muslim Americans. And you can't smoke hookah tobacco without a water pipe, such as this one. It needs to be prepared, which takes time. You have to measure water, cook charcoal, prepare the bowl, and it could take anywhere between fifteen to twenty minutes. It's not a regular thing, and it's definitely not a quick fix like cigarettes and vapes are. Therefore, I ask that you please do not include it in this ordinance. Thank you.
We're gonna also call Arby Sardarian, Arbe Davudian, and Janie Kim-- I don't know if it's the same Janie Kim or a different one-- and Bahay Issa.
Hello, council members. My name's John Nadur, and I have a retail shop that employs good practices. We sell only hookah. As you've seen demonstrated by the gentleman before me, hookahs are large and cumbersome. They take fifteen to thirty minutes to set up, and the hookah session can last an hour or much longer. Kids are not doing this in high school restrooms. That would be impossible. We support the kids that came out today, but hookah is not the issue here. Not one child I spoke today mentioned hookah. It was all about vape. So why are you considering lumping in hookah with the flavor ban? This is a traditional practice from my culture that has been around for dozens of generations. There are no statistics that hookah is a harmful epidemic. Our governor has publicly stated that hookah is not the problem. I urge you to consider carving out hookah from any flavor bans. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name's Annie Teigen. I'm with Tobacco-Free Kids, representing youth in the city of Los Angeles and throughout the country. We support a comprehensive ordinance with no loopholes or exemptions. And I have just two points to make after hearing some of the other testimony. One is to correct an earlier statement made about the New York City policy that just passed. The council passed their ordinance to end the sale of flavored vaping products first, and they passed it forty-two to two. They had thirty cosponsors, and that covered flavored vaping products. They separately are considering a menthol cigarette ordinance. Currently, that ordinance now has thirty-seven cosponsors. That's thirty-seven out of fifty New York City council members are cosponsoring that ordinance to end the sale of menthol cigarettes. So New York City will pass the menthol ordinance, and perhaps Los Angeles City Council can beat them to it. My second point is a reminder of the bottom line. This is about kids versus tobacco industry profit. And L.A. kids deserve a comprehensive ordinance with no exemptions. Thanks.
We're gonna also call Sarkis Gregorian, Omar Othman, Amy Alverenga, and Vik Tuzian.
Hello. Thank you for your time today. My name is Arby Sardarian. I'm here to examine hookah because it's a culture thing that we do. If you go to any Middle Eastern home, you see a hookah in a corner. Every time they get together, they're gonna sit outside and then smoke a hookah and socialize and talk about whatever, what's going on. So I know kids are vaping, Juul is a problem. I got-- I'm absolutely okay with that. You guys are right in that point, but that has nothing to do with hookah. So you guys have to consider which direction we are going and what is what. So don't include hookah in this ban and don't put people out of business for no reason. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Genesis Jerez, Steve King, Gary Michaelia, Nayan Kang. Go ahead.
My name is Bahay Issa. I'm a proud owner of a third-generation hookah pipe manufacturing company based out of Los Angeles, California. Our company manufactures all our products locally here in Los Angeles, California. Our production companies are IS 9001 and AS 9100 certified. Although we are a small company, we provide jobs, employ, and support our families. I ask that you please exempt hookah-flavored tobacco as it is not the same as vape or cigarettes. Hookah is a part of our culture and a part of our social life and lifestyle. Thank you for your time.
This is the last call for Eric McIndes, Arbe Davudian, and Janie Kim.
Hi, my name is Vik Tuzjan, and I wanted to point out two things because of such short time. I wanted to point out that there's-- the MSA fund that the L.A. City and the state take money from has received over $2 billion in the last twenty years. To me, that sounds a little concerning because I did a little research on what goes-- what's in cigarettes. And just off the first list, there's around seven thousand chemicals. So just off the list, I can see, out of the first ten, seven of them are aromatic compounds. So basically, what that is, is there's some sort of a flavor there. Like, some of them, for example, taste like orange. Some taste like coffee, chocolate. So there's flavoring within cigarettes. And what I'm concerned about is, why aren't you guys focusing your attention on cigarettes that kill half a million people a year? And you're focusing on vape and hookah, a minute percentage of tobacco sales?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna also call Lydia Lissing, John Poudar, Helicia Guetta, and Art Habibi.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Steve King. I'm a member of the L.A. Youth First Tobacco Coalition and a member of Koreatown Youth and Community Coalition-- Community Center. I'm here today to inform the council of the issue of flavored tobacco products that has been affecting our community's health. KYCC has a long history of serving the Korean-American community. Nationally, Korean-American tobacco use prevalence estimates to be twenty percent, compared to the city of Los Angeles, prevalence of twelve percent. And forty-six percent of students reported going to a hookah bar or a store, as well as compared with cigarettes. Hookah contains five times more cancer-causing agents, hundred times more tar, four times more nicotine, and eleven times more carbon monoxide, making flavored tobaccos less accessible to our youth is a paramount importance to KYCC and for our community. Thank you.
Good seeing you, Steve. Go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Genesis Hares. I live in Council District Nine. I work in Council District Four and Thirteen. I am a mother of two boys, and I actually have an uncle that has chronic bronchitis. We have spoken about all the health, all the issues that are happening, but today, I am here standing as somebody that goes in and out of the hospital, constantly having to deal with the issues that my uncle has. He has asthma due to smoking, and this is the kind of issue that many community members constantly have to deal with, that people don't really bring to light. We're constantly trying to put profit over people. We're constantly trying to not look at what's really gonna happen long-term for youth and for our communities. So I stand here before you council members that you make a decision, not on right now, but what's really gonna happen is what's really gonna impact the future of our health and our community years to come.
Thank you. I'm gonna call again Sarkis Gregorian, Omar Othman, Gary Michaelia, and Amy Alvergana.
Good afternoon. My name is Nayan Kang, and I'm a resident of Los Angeles, and I have been a social worker for two decades. I am here today to inform the council of the issue of flavored tobacco products that have been affecting community health and driving recent youth e-cigarette epidemic. As a youth who grew up in Koreatown and as a social worker currently working with youth and families in Los Angeles, I care deeply about protecting our community. Tobacco use disproportionately affects many racial and ethnic minority groups because of where they live. And research shows that more tobacco retailers exist in areas with large Black, Hispanic, and low-income populations. Although the use of e-cigarettes is declining in the U.S., sales of menthol cigarettes have steadily increased in recent years, especially among young people and new smokers. Please take bold action by protecting a new generation of youth from getting addicted to nicotine by ending the sale of flavored tobacco products. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Lau, Johnny Tuma, George Yakub.
Good afternoon. My name is Hilse Guerra. I am a member of the Los Angeles Youth First Tobacco Coalition, and I am here today to provide some information regarding e-cigarettes, hookah, and flavored tobacco products. In spring 2019, the California Youth Advocacy Network, in partnership with campuses organized and united for good health, student leaders developed a survey to measure tobacco behavior and perception among students attending colleges and universities in Los Angeles County. These are their findings. Two-point-three percent of students reported current hookah use compared to six percent of California young adults. However, six-point-seven percent of L.A. County students reported any use of hookah. Sixty percent of students, regardless of tobacco use status, reported seeing hookah use at college/university Greek or house parties. Forty-six percent of students reported going to a hookah bar or store. Fifty-seven percent of the students who have visited a hookah retailer reported it being within one to two miles from their college campus. For every person who dies from a smoking-related disease, twenty more people suffer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm also gonna call Sarah Lee, James Naino, Oleg Schlechter, and Isaac Hong.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Lydia Lissing, and I'm a member of the L.A. Youth First Tobacco Coalition. I'm here today to inform the council of our public opinion survey report findings that we've conducted this year among residents of L.A. City. Two out of three L.A. residents support a law that prohibits the sale of flavored tobacco products, including electronic cigarettes, little cigars, menthol, and hookah. Eighty-three percent of residents believe it is easy for youth to buy tobacco products in their community. There is strong public support found among the city of Los Angeles residents for strengthening regulation of local tobacco retailers. Again, with the personal statements by our Vista Charter middle-school students being sold jewels at parties that they attend, and our young adult purchase survey rates numbering forty-seven-point-five percent for youth successfully purchasing flavored tobacco products, in the interest of public health, a comprehensive flavor policy should curb youth access. Thank you, council, for your time.
Thank you. I'm gonna do a last call for Sarkis Gregorian, Omar Othman, Amy Alvergana, and Gary Michaelia. That's the last call for them.
Good evening. My name is Andy Lau. I'm a member of the Los Angeles Youth First Tobacco Coalition, and I work with KYCC Youth Drug Abuse Prevention Program, where high schoolers want to relate to the council regarding community health being affected by the issues of flavored tobacco products and also the increased usage of e-cigarettes from young people. They're not here today, but have made a collage to show that they are here in spirit, composing of around twenty members. Firstly, one in four high school students have used tobacco product. Four out of those five kids have used tobacco that start with a flavored product. I believe that these flavored products, although appealing to adults, are equally, if not more, appealing to younger people who see these flavors as something that is very fun to try without realizing the effects on their health. But e-cigarette usage on the rise, starting from last year, five thousand seven hundred kids have started to vape each day. The best practice of public health policy for a community regarding this issue is to restrict the sale of flavored tobacco products. Thank you very much, council, for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. And please tell me your name again, sir.
My name is Andy Lau.
Andy Lau. All right, so we're gonna go in order. So Sarkis Gregorian, followed by Omar Othman, followed by Amy Alvergana.
None of these are me.
All right. Gary Michaelia, John Poudar, Art Habibi, Johnny Tuma? Anyone? No? George Yakub?
Yes.
There you are. Okay, now we're caught up. Brian Zaragoza, Sarah Lee, and James Naino.
Hi, city members. My name is George Yakub. I'm a proud manufacturer of coconut shell hookah charcoal. I am against the ban of flavored hookah tobacco. Hookah tobacco has never been targeted towards youth. Neither is its intentions. Instead of banning hookah, I suggest a ban on marketing and targeting to youth by means of stop using labels that are on products towards fruits, names of fruits, pictures of fruits, so on. A lot of people were talking about-- everyone seemed to be concerned-- that flavored tobacco is targeted towards youth with nicotine affecting the brain development of ages of eighteen. Does that mean no one cares about the effect of regular, unflavored cigarettes towards the adults of our community? My great-grandparents would be flipping in their grave if they know that we're banning hookah today. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Lee, and I am a member of Youth First Tobacco Coalition. E-cigarette and flavored tobacco product use is very real here in Los Angeles. I live with a family member who uses e-cigarettes, and I've personally witnessed the current e-cigarette epidemic among youth and adults in my neighborhood. Smoke from jewels and other vaping products aren't as noticeable as regular cigarettes, and this definitely enables individuals to smoke indoors, inside vehicles, and other public spaces. In addition, working with youth has made me realize that better policies are necessary to protect them from being the target of e-cigarette and flavored tobacco product market. I am here today to ask the council to pass flavored tobacco restriction to not only help protect the health of our community, but more importantly, to protect the youth. Thank you, council, for your time.
Thank you. I'm gonna call Oliver Moss, Jasmine Garcia, Arbe, Melanie Toh, and Sam Roy.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Isaac Hong, and I am a member of the Los Angeles Youth First Tobacco Coalition. I am here today to inform the council of the issue of the flavored tobacco products that has been affecting community health and driving the recent youth e-cigarette epidemic. According to the 2017 and 18 California Tobacco Survey, eighty-three percent of current high school student tobacco users reported using a flavored tobacco products. Sixty-one percent of current high school student tobacco users bought e-cigarettes from vape shops. One in four high school students have used tobacco products. Four out of five kids who have used tobacco started with a flavored product. Making flavored tobacco products less accessible to our youth will prevent many from starting to smoke and improve the health of the community. It is our responsibility to create a safe place for our youth because they are our future. All flavored tobacco products, including e-jusets, menthol, and hookah, should be removed from the marketplace. Cities should enact citywide ordinance to restrict the sale of these products.
Thank you. I'm gonna call again John Poudar, Poudar, Art Habibi, Johnny Tuma, Brian Zaragoza, and James Naino.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Brian Zaragoza. I'm also a member of the Los Angeles Youth First Tobacco Coalition, and I'm here today in support of a policy that would prohibit access of tobacco-flavored products, particularly those aimed at the youth population. As has been mentioned by others, the issue of flavored tobacco products has been affecting community health and has driven the recent youth e-cigarette epidemic.[1589.35] From two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, e-cigarette use has increased seventy-eight percent among high school students and forty-eight percent among middle school students. Thank you for your consideration of a public health-focused policy that is comprehensive. Thank you.
James Nino, I own a hookah bar in Long Beach. Last week, I went to the Long Beach City Council meeting, and we had a moment of silence for twelve people that got injured in gun violence, and three of those people died. That same week, we lost three people to a drunk driver. But yet, we still sell guns, and we still sell alcohol. Four hundred years of hookah smoking, not one related death or injury. Thank you.
I'm also gonna call Remy Maraz, Sam Bhattacharya, and Maria, Maryann Hernandez. Go ahead.
Hello. My name is Jasmine Garcia, and I am a member of the Los Angeles Youth First Tobacco Coalition. At a community event last month, we had a resource table with a display of different tobacco products that included cigarettes, chewing tobacco, and swishers, to name a few. A little girl approached the table and pointed to a swisher product. She looked at me and asked, "Is that a chocolate bar?" I responded, "No, it does look like a chocolate bar, but that's actually tobacco." Tobacco products that are bright, colorful, and flavored are appealing to children. That's the reality. The use of candy-flavored tobacco products and e-cigarettes is a growing health epidemic among youth. The city of L.A. needs to stop the sale of these products. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Melanie To, and I'm a member of the Los Angeles Youth First Tobacco Coalition, a health, public health professional and resident of Los Angeles. I am here today to inform the council of the issue of flavored tobacco products that has been affecting community health and driving the recent youth e-cigarette epidemic. Currently, tobacco use is the nation's leading cause of preventable death and disease, killing more people per year than AIDS, alcohol, car accidents, street drugs, murders, and suicides combined. This is especially concerning in light of the recent upswing in tobacco use prevalence among youth and young adults. Mentals are starter products for youth. Numerous research studies show that youth prefer menthol and other candy-flavored nicotine products. Making flavored tobacco products, including menthol cigarettes, less accessible to our youth will prevent many from starting to smoke and thus improve the health of the community. Hence, menthol and all flavored tobacco products, including e-jusets, should be removed from the marketplaces. Cities should enact citywide ordinance to restrict the sale of these products. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Last call for John Poldar, Art Habibi, and Johnny Tuma.
Hello. I am Roy. I'm a tourist from India. I came here to visit Hollywood. Pardon me for my English and my accent. I would like to plead this house not to ban the hookah culture from L.A., a city that has a global audience. I'm not much aware of how things happen around here, but hookah culture is there in India too. And in two weeks, I am in L.A. I walk up to one hookah lounge, and I find people speaking in some languages I know and some languages I don't. But two hours later, I made some friends, and L.A. seemed far safer and friendlier to me. Ten thousand miles away from my homeland, I only know that this hookah lounge was the place where I got some friends and some people to talk and exchange ideas. Thank you.
What was your name again? I'm sorry. Your name?
It's Ron Roy.
Ron Roy?
Yeah.
Sam Roy?
It's Ron Roy, maybe.
Thank you. Okay, Sam.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Remy Maraz, and I am with the Los Angeles Metropolitan Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and Chairman Ruiz District. Our chamber represents over five hundred retailers. This possible flavor ban will impact them, their families, and the communities they serve. Banning legal products at licensed retail stores would undermine the city and state's tobacco retail licensing program, which has successfully limited youth access to tobacco, protected consumers from illegal products, and given government enforcement tools. The real issue here, as stated by the FDA, is the current illegal market of vape and THC products sold just blocks from City Hall. Our member retailers follow all the laws, pay all their taxes, and employ local community members. This type of full flavor ban will devastate their businesses. We urge you to only ban illegal vape and THC products and not get manipulated by tobacco control with their misinformation campaign tactics. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I'm gonna call again Oleg Schlechter, Oliver Moss, Arbe Hay, and Sam Roy. Go ahead.
Hi. Good afternoon. This is Sam Bhattacharya. I am visiting L.A. from India too, and this is the third time I am visiting U.S. L.A. is one of the best places I've visited. It's beautiful. With so many different cultures and language, it's extraordinary. One of the best things I saw was this hookah lounges. Somehow, it made me think I'm back in our old traditional culture, where I always seem to find someone to interact with in Hindi, our native language. It's an old culture that may date even back to the birth of Julius Caesar, and I'm sure they were strong people. We socialize with people and friends in these hookah lounges. So for the tourism industry, it's important we don't fill out of place here in Los Angeles, Hollywood. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna call Jamie Rojas, Arnie Abramson, Marissa London, John Bowles, Courtney Hamilton, Vic Duzian.
Hello, Honorable Health Committee. My name is Mariana Hernandez. I am a resident of the city of L.A., and I'm here to advocate for a full ban on flavored tobacco, including menthol and hookah. And I'd also really like to bring your attention and ask that you prioritize going after the manufacturers and these predatory companies rather than the individuals who are already addicted. And quite honestly, that's more a systematic issue than an individual issue. Let's move away from criminalization, and let's hold these companies accountable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilmen. My name is Courtney Hamilton, and I'm here today representing hundreds of independent tobacco retailers. The motivation behind this ordinance is well-intentioned, but it's unfortunately based on bad data. Nicotine products have not caused any of the illnesses and deaths that have created, that have been spoken about in this epidemic. Use-smoking rates are up, but they're up because we have failed them as a community. We have failed to educate them about the fact that smoking, that vaping is smoking. Children don't smoke cigarettes anymore because they've been taught that it's dangerous. We have not taught them that vaping is also dangerous. Other jurisdictions have achieved the same desired results with less restrictive measures that allow adults to partake in this legal activity, that keep over four thousand, that will keep over four thousand mostly small businesses in the city of Los Angeles in business, and all of their employees with jobs. Banning these flavors will not significantly reduce use, but it will cause a greater benefit.
Thank you. And last call for Oleg Schlechter, Oliver Moss, Arbe, and Sam Roy.
I'm Marissa London. I work on Equality California Tobacco Control Program, and I am a resident of District Thirteen. I just want to provide some statistics that further explain why comprehensive tobacco control is pro-equality legislation. So there are higher rates of smoking across LGBTQ folks. One in four lesbian, gay, and bisexual people smoke compared to one in six of the four, the general population, and one in three trans folks smoke. Seven out of ten LGBT trans, or, sorry, LGBT youth who smoke, smoke menthol. So that's seventy percent of LGBT youth smokers are smoking menthol, and that same statistic is true for black youth. Seventy percent of black youth smokers smoke menthol cigarettes or menthol-flavoring. LGBT adults are twice as likely to smoke menthol. That's about ten percent compared to four percent. And so across the board, the disproportionate use of these tobacco products among queer individuals and communities of color means that a comprehensive ban will produce greater benefits.
Thank you. I'm gonna also call Reema Coroy, Bernice Sanders, Ronan Perry, Lan Spencer, and Meritza Mares. Go ahead, sir.
Arnie Abramson, President of the Hookah Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for having us with love and respect, council members. Hookah Chamber of Commerce leads with education and preservation. We ask for respect. We give respect. Hookah is not the problem. Senator Portentino carved this out on the state-level SB thirty-eight. Governor Newsom said, "Hookah is not the problem in classrooms." Rodondo Beach, Long Beach, Burbank, San Diego County has carved hookah out. Hookah is not the problem in classrooms. As you could see, this is a traditional hookah. This is what we're fighting for. Our ancestors are tradition, and people from India, Persia, Armenia, they come to Los Angeles because we're diverse. We enjoy, we appreciate the tradition of smoking hookah. Thank you, and it took a Latina to actually support the Armenian culture in our district. We love you.
Thank you. I'm gonna call, if you could refrain, please, refrain from your applause. I'm going to call Jamie Rojas, John Bowles, Dick Duzian.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Reema Cori. I represent Fumari, who is also a member of the Hookah Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of thousands of Arabs, Persians, Armenians, Indians, and Turks that live in Los Angeles and practice a centuries-old tradition of hookah, we ask for a hookah cultural exemption. It is not true that smoking hookah for forty-five minutes is equivalent to a hundred cigarettes. That study was done in China with unprocessed tobacco, which is very different from hookah tobacco, which is moist, and it's not loose-leaf tobacco that needs to be repacked. There are published credible studies that prove that hookah aerosol is seventy-five percent water and glycerol versus cigarette smoke, which is seventy-five percent tar and nicotine. It is consumed far, has far less tar in nicotine and consume more infrequently. Hookah is a social thing. It's a traditional thing. All these people here, it's a part of their culture. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Ronan, and I'm here from Alfakar, a hookah distributor here in L.A. and nationwide. I'd just like to underline a few points. I know a lot has been said already about hookah, but for me, the real reason to not include hookah in a flavor ban is three reasons. One, a flavor hookah ban is a ban of all hookah. Hookah is a flavor product, always has been, yet it has never triggered a youth use epidemic like we see with vaping and cigarettes. Second reason is, it is a fundamentally different product than any other tobacco and nicotine product. It is, cigarettes and vapes are used every day. You can have many cigarettes per day. You can vape all day. People use hookah, on average, in the U.S. twice per month. It's an occasional, social thing, not a quick fix or a regular-use product. It's a social ritual, not a form of nicotine-seeking behavior. The last reason that I, no, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm gonna call Bernice Sanders, Lan Spencer, Meritza Mares, George Johnson, Virginia Escamilla, Alejandro Narango, and Anais Hernandez. Go ahead.
Hello. We thank you for--
And your name is, state your name.
My name is Bernice Sanders, and I'm a volunteer with American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network. And this ordinance is very important to us and to me too, because I do have grandchildren, and I wouldn't want them to be affected with these flavored tobacco products. And I reside in Los Angeles, and I live in the Eighth District. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. My name is Lon Spencer. I'm a police officer here in Los Angeles. For the last ten years, I have managed security for a hookah lounge here in Los Angeles. I'm here to state that businesses like this lounge shouldn't be banned in the city of Los Angeles. First off, I'd like to say that public safety has always been our primary objective. At this lounge, providing a fun, safe, and leisurely atmosphere has been paramount. Every civilian whom enters must provide a valid government ID upon admittance. I can attest that we go to great lengths to keep minors out of our lounge. Myself and other armed guards rove and patrol the lounge and the surrounding businesses to ensure that quality, safety, and security are afforded to all. Secondly, I'd like to address that this lounge has many employees and many people who would be greatly affected by its absence. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm gonna also call Alejandro Narango, Anais Hernandez, John Hecker, Jimmy Delgado, Maylin Marquez, and Jose Navarro.
Hello, council. My name is George Johnson. I manufacture these beautiful hookahs, this wood one that everyone keeps bringing up. I would like you to consider a carve-out for hookah, traditional, non-electronic hookah. We seem to be lumped together with vaping and other tobacco products. Hookah tobacco products have the lowest consumption among high school students. We are not the problem. I hope that everybody can see that there's anecdotal evidence. People keep trying to tie us into it, like, "Oh, vaping is up, and so is hookah." With what study are you basing that on? There's so much misinformation. A hundred cigarette study has been debunked many times, yet it seems to be trotted out as real fact all the time. It's been so frustrating. We have a carve-out, full carve-out from Burbank, partial carve-out for lounges in Culver City. Long Beach gave us a carve-out, the second-largest city in this county, San Diego unincorporated. There's precedent for this. Thank you so much.
Hello. My name is Virginia Escamilla. I'm a volunteer for the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network. But most importantly, I am a parent of two students at Igoroc Junior Senior High School in District Fourteen, which is where we reside. I am an incredibly frustrated parent at the moment. I'm involved in the school community and in my community at large, and I am appalled at how prevalent vaping is in our kids' schools. It is very alluring to them to try this because of the flavors that are available to them. Kids know better to not smoke cigarettes because they taste like crap, but they will vape the flavored products. They will smoke the flavored products because it doesn't taste bad. And make no mistake about this, this is big tobacco's way of addicting our next generation of smokers who will continue to be smokers for lifelong. So I'm not gonna rattle off facts for you and numbers because you have them before you. I trust that you are intelligent individuals who will do your duty to review those things and save our kids.
Thank you. I'm gonna call Alessandro Quintero, Mohamed Abrah, Carlos Leon, Jesus Trejo, and Angela Parfen.
Hello. My name is John Hecker. I am a security guard at a hookah lounge. I simply want to state fifty seconds of my time to say I think hookah should be exempt from the flavor ban. I ID everybody that comes in. I've never had a minor come in. We've never had an issue by law like that. I also find it a very safe place, not only for people to come and smoke. It's a cultural tradition for friends, family. But I also met my wife there. She found it a safe place. She would come in. She would study for school. I mean, if she thinks it's safe, and I think it's safe for her, I don't see a problem with any of it. Thank you. Please exempt hookah.
Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Carlos Leon, community organizer with Community Coalition in alliance with Families Against Flavored Tobacco. We're working South Central L.A., where I grew up, and I've seen the effect of the constant disinvestment and how addiction epidemics destroy and kill our community. This is now an epidemic. We recently surveyed over five thousand residents in South L.A., and seventy to eighty percent see the over-concentration of smoke shops selling flavored tobacco and menthol as an alarming public health and public safety concern. The health disparities are at an all-time high in black and brown communities. Please do the right thing and protect our health and our lives by banning these addictive products that are destroying our kids and our families. Ban all flavored tobacco, including menthol. Thank you.
Meritza Mares, Alejandro Narango, Anais Hernandez, Jimmy Delgado, Maylin Marquez, Jose Navarro, Alejandro Quintero, Mohamed Abrah, Carlos Leon, Jesus Trejo, Angela Parfen, Genesis Jerez, Iran Di Ruiz, Rena Mamun, Christina Lopez, Madeline Orellano, Veronica Barton, Aleah Clark.
She needs translation. Is that available? Or do you want me to do it?
Do, we don't have a translate. Do we have a translator? No.
I can do so.
You could translate. Go ahead. Let's give two minutes.
See.
Buenas tardes. Yo quiero decir que yo vine a apoyar a que las tiendas ya no vendan tabaco de sabores, ni de menta, por favor, porque es dañino para los adolescentes. Muchas gracias.
Good afternoon. I'm here with Community Coalition, and I'm here to support the ban of flavored tobacco, including menthol and any other flavorings because they are harmful to adolescents. Thank you.
Thank you. What was her name? I'm sorry?
Christina Lopez.
Christina Lopez?
Lopez.
Thank you. Again, I'm gonna call again Genesis Jerez, Rena Mamun, Madeline Orellano, Veronica Barton, Aleah Clark, Ray Sean Pittman, Minzia Fernandez, Ken Carson, Anthony Simmons, Ashley Cruz, Angel Bernal, Luis Linares, Natalie Serrano.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Minzita Fernandez. Soy miembro de Community Coalition, residente de sur centro de Los Ángeles y madre latina de tres jóvenes.
Good afternoon. My name is Minzita Fernandez. I'm a member of Community Coalition, a resident of South Central L.A., and a Latina mother of three youth.
Como madre soltera, ha sido difícil para mí mantener a mis hijos fuera de adicciones. El tabaco de sabores es una manera muy accesible para nuestros niños en convertirse en adictos.
As a single mother, it has been very difficult for me to keep my children out of addictions. Flavored tobacco is very accessible to my children and can lead them to addiction.
No es posible que vean a nuestros hijos como signo de pesos o de dólares.
It is unimaginable and unthinkable that my children and children across the city are seen as dollar signs.
Les pido por favor que aprueben una ley que prohíba el tabaco de sabores. Gracias.
I ask that you please approve of the flavored tobacco ban. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, state your name.
Hi. My name is Rena Mamun. I would like to thank you for having me here to speak with you all today. Flavored tobacco has been known to cause significant public health implications for youth and people of color. As a result, nicotine can have lasting damaging effects on the adolescent brain, which is continuing to develop until the mid twenties. Because the adolescent brain is still developing, nicotine use during this critical period can disrupt the formation of the brain circuits that control attention, learning, and susceptibility to addiction. Any products containing nicotine in any form-- Any products containing nicotine in any form among youth, including in e-cigarettes, is unsafe. We are here because we are a generation who wants change for a healthier community. Please take the bold action by protecting a new generation of youth from getting addicted to nicotine by ending the sale of flavored tobacco products. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm gonna also call Angel Bernal, Luis Linares, Natalie Natalia Serrano, Antonio Orozco, Terrell Richardson, Jesse Ramos, Arten Gukasi. And again, I apologize for not pronouncing the names correctly. Please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Samantha Nor, and I'm a student at the University of Southern California. I want to start by thank you so much for taking this into consideration. I'm here today to support the ban on the sale of flavored tobacco with no exemptions. My generation and younger could have been the first to have ever been non-smokers. We should be focused on recovering from addiction, not masking it with flavors. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. It truly means a lot to me and the future of my community.
Thank you. I'm gonna call a few more names. Excuse me, sir. Jesse, Terrell Richardson, Jesse Ramos, Chelsea McElwee, Ambrosio Aguilar, Vargas, Irijon, Roberto Levy, Jazz Watts, Rushawn Hollins, Tier Messia Jacobs. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Ken Carson. I'm a concerned citizen. I am strongly in support of moves to bring the vaping issues and its effect upon our children under control, although I'm not sure that this ban is necessarily the way to do that. I am equally strongly against the ban of any menthol cigarettes for its disproportionate effect on the African-American community. And just sitting here and listening to some of the stories, I also wanna give the hookah people some support, man, because it seems like that's a part of their culture, that they really would be harmful to their culture. So I just wanna support them as well. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Chelsea McElwee. I'm a native and resident of South Central LA, and I support the ban of flavored tobacco to protect our youth.
Thank you. I'm gonna call again, last call. Veronica Barton, Alea Clark, Ray Sean Pittman, Anthony Simmons, Ashley Cruz, and Angel Bernal. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Vargas Sujarian. I'm here for the cultural exemption of hookah. We're less than 1% of the 4,500 tobacco licenses in LA County. Let's see how many of us are here. Can I just have a show of hands? I'd like to say that many people here are under the incorrect assumption that a ban on flavored tobacco is a win against big tobacco. However, the truth is actually the opposite. This ordinance will be eliminating their competition and will only strengthen big tobacco, allowing them to fund and pursue more heinous means of business. I would like to ask for the stop of the attack on our culture of hookah and to not empower big tobacco. Hookah is by far a superminority when compared to the sum of all other smokers. This ordinance is inherently discriminatory because it bans flavored tobacco of all kinds and not all tobacco. There are alternate ways to control electronic smoking devices and liquid tobacco, aside from suppression and persecution. Thank you very much.
I'm gonna call Haya Connie, Melinda Kirby, Cambria Garrel.
Do I go? Yeah.
Hello, my name is Arten Gukasi. Please exempt the hookah flavor ban. My grandmother smokes hookah, and so do I. Hookah has been in our generation for years. It's a cultural thing. There's never been a hooka, uh, eh, sorry. There's never been an issue with the hookah flavors, hookah at all, or hookah lounges. Please exempt hookah from the flavor ban. It's a reasonable ask.
Thank you.
My name is Termitia Jacobs. I'm a resident of Los Angeles and a dedicated mother of three. I stand here in support of the ban of flavored tobacco. Help me continue to help my three.
Thank you. What was your name again?
Termitia.
Charisa?
Termitia.
Termitia, thank you. I'm gonna call a few more people. Arvig Clangian, Andre Kecian, Harut Kesian, Ronnie Kaloyan, David Hambaramitsian. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Melinda Kirby. I'm a mother of three teenagers, as well as I use flavored e-liquid to help myself quit smoking after 16 years. Flavors really do help people like me when nothing else works. I tried patches, I tried gum, I tried being, you know, hypnotized. Nothing, nothing worked until flavored e-liquid. I was just noticing earlier that the CDC actually just put on their website today, the National Youth Tobacco Survey, 77.7% of our youth said that flavors had nothing to do with their choice to vape. So, I mean, that's something really to consider there. You know, 77.7% didn't start vaping because of flavors, which means if you take away flavors, they're going to continue to vape tobacco flavors. It's just going to punish people like me, the adult, the adult that finally got their health back because of vaping. So I ask you, please, just consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna call again. Luis Linares, Natalia Serrano, Antonio Orozco, Terrell Richardson, Jesse Ramos, Arten Gukasi, Ambrosio Aguilar, Roberto Levy, and Jazz Watts. Calling them again. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Dr. Cambria Garrel. I'm a pediatrician in Los Angeles, and I care for patients in Los Angeles here. I'm urging you to end the sale of flavored tobacco products, including menthol, spearmint, and mint flavors. Over 80% of current adult smokers tried their first tobacco product before the age of 18. Kids who vape are over three and a half times more likely to move on to traditional combustible cigarettes, thanks to nicotine addiction and the initial appeal of flavors. Please take bold action to protect our children from a life of nicotine addiction by ending the sale of candy-flavored tobacco products. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Health Committee. My name is Andre Kechian. I'm 25 years of age, and I spent my savings from working three jobs to open my hookah lounge, which is a designated hookah smoking area, with zero citations in three years. This topic was something that nobody talked about until Juul and Puff came into play. Hookah is something that I saw in our culture growing up. If you were to ban hookah, you will be hurting our culture and crush my American dream of being an entrepreneur. The conversation here is menthol cigarettes and vaping, not hookah. Please exempt hookah from this ban. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ronnie. I'm a LA resident, and hookah is part of our tradition, is part of our culture. You don't see hookahs in schools. You don't see, they don't go in the bathroom, hit their jewels. Hookah is not like that. Hookah is even hard to set up for adults. So what makes you think a child's gonna be able to do it? Please exempt hookah from the bill.
Thank you. I'm gonna also call Karo Harbatsumian, Mallory Taylor, Latia Sural, Maria Gonzalez, Kayla Gonzalez. Go ahead, sir.
Hi. David, resident of LA. I'm here to advise the fact that-
David, is your last, your last name?
Hambart Sumian.
Thank you.
All right. I'm here to advise the fact that everyone opposing the ban of flavored tobacco or even vape flavors is not accepting the fact that the reason children have access to these products is because someone is out there breaking the law. The harm caused by vape products is based off of replicated products. If there was proper regulations, like the ones that LA is lacking on marijuana, like including vape products, was being, we wouldn't be here. If no compensation was being settled, 50% of these people sitting here wouldn't be here. Thank you for your time, and please consider your ban on traditions, man.
Thank you. I'm gonna clean up right here. Last call. Luis Linares, Natalia Serrano, Antonio Orozco, Terrell Richardson, Jesse Ramos, Arten Gukaski, Ambrosio Aguilar, Roberto Levy, and Jazz Watts. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Arviv Clangian. My sister and I own a hookah lounge in LA County. We have been open for almost three years. Sorry. We have been open for almost three years, and we are trying to live our American dream as coming to this country as a minority. Hookah gives my sister and I, just like our customers, the opportunity to come together and socialize with friends and family, or to come unwind by themselves, to do homework, or just watch some TV. We have been violation-free and always check ID and do not allow anyone under 21 to be inside the lounge or to smoke. Please exempt hookah from the ban and save our culture.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jazz Watts. I am the founder and CEO of Jazz Stepping Stones Transitional Housing here in the city of Los Angeles. One of the things that I have noticed while being in business here in the city is that during intake, when I'm doing an intake with a potential client, the one thing that is stated time and time again is, how did this happen to you? Even basic from just being homeless, is when did you even start smoking when they were children? The epidemic with the homelessness, we can't have an epidemic with smoking.
Thank you.
My name is Dr. Mallory Taylor. I'm a pediatrician in Los Angeles and a resident of Los Angeles. I urge you to end the sale of flavored tobacco products without exemptions. One-third of high school students in our city have tried e-cigarettes, and the vast majority of them, 97%, have used flavored products. We also know that youth smokers are more likely to use menthol cigarettes than any other age group. Flavored tobacco use among youth can lead to lifelong addiction and devastating consequences. Please protect the health of our children and our community by ending the sale of flavored tobacco products without exemptions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna call Rushawn Hollins, Haya Connie, Harut Kesian, Karo Harbatsumian, Latia Sural, Maria Gonzalez, Kayla Gonzalez, Francesca Games, Natalia Serrano, Ricardo Levy, George Salib, Dr. Wendy Walsh, Madeline Orellana, Michael Olivares, Karina Fuenes.
Good afternoon. I was the first name on the list and the last one called. Hi, I'm Dr. Wendy Walsh from KFI AM 640, and I'm a professor of health psychology at Cal State Channel Islands. I'm here on behalf of an organization called Parents Against Vaping because my daughter, in the ninth grade, right after thyroid surgery and on the autism spectrum, was suspended from school for vaping in the bathroom. There's an issue I think you legislators need to be aware of, and that is access to public education. Every day, LAUSD keeps thousands of children home because they are trying to stem this crisis. They're doing the best they can, but the school boards need your support. The school boards need your help. The best they can do is send our kids home and deny them access to education. And I also wanna say politely, with all due respect to the good Angelenos here in this city, we are also seeing the work of the tobacco industry, who, as you know, in New York City, deployed the very legitimate concerns of African-Americans as a weapon against tobacco. Don't get distracted.
Thank you. Doctor. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is George Salib. I have a lounge in Valley Village in Rose District. I am a pillar in my industry. I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce Hollywood and North Hollywood. I also work very closely with North Hollywood PD and the Van Nuys PD. My lounge has been in Valley Village now for 10 years and has brought everybody in the community together. Having this ban go into effect on us will not only affect me, but the entire community. I don't know what to go home and tell my staff after this. I'd really consider, if you guys consider looking into this ban and really kinda getting hookah off of it. I understand the problems. We all see the problems, but we don't feel hookah is the problem. It's just not fair for us and for everybody else.
Thank you.
Afternoon. I'm from American Lung Association, whose mission it is to save lives-
And your name?
I'm sorry? Michael Olivares, from American Lung Association, whose mission it is to save lives and prevent lung disease. As such, we strongly support the effort to protect the health of the city's residents. Now, I wanna remind you, there's no constitutional right to smoke, vape, or use hookah. As leaders, you have the right, though, to legislate for public health. The tobacco industry, some are here, have a well-documented history of marketing menthol to communities and children, communities of color and youth. For over 13 years, I've participated in stings, and I've seen sales to minors and illegal food and drink sales in hookah shops. This ordinance is restricting sales of flavored products, not possession or use. Five, the black market argument is a slippery slope, logical fallacy, not backed by data. In fact, we've seen in places that have passed flavor restrictions more positive outcomes, like more quit attempts. So I've seen big tobacco say cigarettes were healing, safe, even not addictive. There are patterns in history, and as a senior airman in the Air Force, I'm here to protect our community. We call on the city to immediately end the sale of flavored tobacco products.
Last call for Rushawn Hollins, Haya Connie, Haru Kesian, Karo Harbatsumian, and Latia Sural. Last call for those individuals.
Hello, my name is Karina Fuenes with the American Lung Association, and I'm also a resident of District 4. There are currently over 15,500 flavored tobacco products on the market today, which includes flavors such as candy, chocolate, strawberry, soda flavors, and menthol. Youth have turned to other tobacco products, such as electronic cigarettes, because of the many flavors available on the market. As a result, many youth are becoming addicted to nicotine, which is harmful to the developing brain. A number of other cities and counties have passed flavor prohibitions without exemptions to menthol and hookah. We therefore urge the city of Los Angeles to do the same in order to protect our youth from being big tobacco's next target. By passing this prohibition, you will send a message that you care about the health of Los Angeles residents and about the health of our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for Maria Gonzalez, Kayla Gonzalez, Francesca Games, and Natalia Serrano. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Natalia Serrano, and I am a student at John C. Fremont High School. I'm here to advocate to ban flavored tobacco with no exemptions. These flavored products are designed to mask the taste and harm of tobacco, and it has to end. I remember a couple days ago, my friend was telling me that he quote-unquote "took a hit" in his English class during third period, during school hours. And I asked him, how are you able to do this without getting caught? And he said, the flavor of the cotton candy, the smell masks this tobacco smell. And this is why I ask you to please restrict the sale of flavored tobacco products. Teenagers like my friend use these products openly, and still we don't notice it, even though it's causing so much harm and damage internally. Thank you for listening.
All right, last call for Ricardo Leva, Madeline Orellana, and Karina Fuenes. Last call. Ricardo Leva, Madeline Orellana, Karina Fuenes. No? Okay. Okay, Walter Perez, Michael Olivares, JJ Jenkins, Amir Khan Dan, and Kevin P. and AJ. Walter Perez, Michael Olivares, JJ Jenkins, AJ, Amir Khan Dan, Kevin P., and Griselda, I don't know if this is a misspelling, but Griselda Dab. Go ahead. Doesn't matter any order. State your name.
My name is Walter Perez.
Great.
I have definitely seen this problem of tobacco usage in my school and in campus. They, I say, I hear a lot of students and a lot of people in my school that, um, that was kind of be, they, they would kinda brag about it in a way that they, the way they smoke in school, this tobacco vaping and stuff like that. And it's kind of hard for me to see this happening in my school, considering I'm like, I'm kind of a people's person. So like, it's hard for me to kinda take that in, like, oh, my friends are kinda destroying themselves, and people that I know are destroying themselves and their health due to the smoking. And I would like to ask you guys, if you guys can take that into consideration of the kids.
Thank you. What was your name again?
Walter Perez.
Great job, Walter. Thank you for your testimony. Next. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Francesca Gomis, and I am an administrator beyond the bell. I am here to show you that we have 2,628 postcards from our 83 LAUSD schools because our students, who are members of the Advocates for Healthy Choices, are here to say we need a ban on flavored products, no exemptions, because we have students in our district who are being impacted. It is not our advocates who are being impacted. It is not our advocates who are being impacted. It is their friends, their peers, their classmates, and they care about their health. So if you all care about their health, our students' health, they are our future. I'm asking you to please pass a ban on flavored products. It is the health of our students. It is the health of our adolescents. And from LAUSD, we're here to say, here are students who want their voices heard. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could refrain from clapping, I apologize if we could refrain from clapping. Go ahead, next.
Good afternoon. My name is Amir Khan Dan. I am a hookah lounge owner. I've been in business for seven years, never had one citation. I'm asking you guys to please exempt hookah from this. All the stories, which is sad and I have real compassion for, they are not hookah-related. You cannot smoke a hookah in the classroom. You cannot take a hookah and go to the bathroom and just smoke out. Hookah is a tradition. We fight for our tradition. It's been around for thousands of years and is part of our culture. It is an event that we just get together. It's not something that we do on an everyday basis. And my lounge, we ID everybody. I haven't had one incident where somebody was a minor that came in that we allowed him to come into our lounge. I employ nineteen people and been around in seven years, and I've been in California and Los Angeles districts for over thirty years.
Thank you. I'm gonna call these names again. I think there were students and they realized they were being called. Mahrez Maritza, Narango Alejandro, Hernandez Aneas, Delgado Jimmy, Malin Marquez, Jose Navarro, Alejandro Quintero, Mohammed Abraar, Jesus Trejo, Angela Parfen. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is J.J. Jenkins. I own the Vapor Spot, which has been open ten years here in Los Angeles. We have a perfect age check record because we are twenty-one and up only access. This youth epidemic did not originate or populate in twenty-one and up vape shops. It originated with high-nick fifty-milligram closed pods like Juul that are used and obtained illicitly by teens for a buzz, no matter what flavor it comes in. Vape shops are important because we specialize in flavors, but also flavors where three-milligram nicotine, three, and not fifty is the most used option. This very low three-milligram option is less nicotine than a single piece of Nicorette gum. It lasts about an hour for a vapor. Without vape shops in this lower three-milligram nick option, clients' only option in LA will be Juul pods and fifty-milligram or combustible cigarettes for their nicotine. They use our liquids from our shops to lower their nicotine levels, some even down to zero flavored placebos. Support BTAs twenty-one and done, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Maritza Mahrez, and this is Alejandro Narango. We are here representing Garfield High School while we discuss the epidemic growth of tobacco products and e-cigarettes among the youth. It is beneficial to our city when ending these products because of harmful effects it has on the developing brain and lungs. According to CBS News, from June through August 2019, fourteen states withhold ninety-four cases of severe lung illnesses associated with vaping.
Many flavors grab the attentions of curious adolescents, such as cotton candy, tutti-frutti, bubblegum, and so on. No single product contributes more to death and disease caused by tobacco use and menthol cigarettes. Your actions to end the use of these harmful products will prevent the initiation of new generation from being addicted to nicotine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If we could refrain from clapping, I apologize if we refrain from clapping, so we could move on. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Aneas Hernandez, and I come from Mendez High School, City Council District Fourteen. Over the course of my high school career, I have seen the use of e-cigarettes and candy-flavored tobacco products becoming an epidemic among young teenagers. Students vaping in the school's bathroom is a big topic in my school. Alarms are going on during the day because of students going into the restrooms and vaping. This triggers the alarms, which disturb our class time and hinder our ability to learn more because of these interruptions like these. These candy-flavored products are designed to mask the harm of tobacco with the sweet taste of candy. There are more than fifteen thousand flavors like cotton candy, bubblegum, strawberry, and mint. Now tell me, how are these flavors target adults? How do these flavors target adults like the companies say they do? Having an eleven-year-old sister that just started middle school, it worries me that she, along with many other classmates, are exposed to these type of harmful products. Putting an end to these exemptions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm Mohammed Abraar. I'm from Advocate for Healthy Choices. I want to point out that like tobacco companies and e-cigarettes are recruiting high schoolers. From the early documents, found that we don't smoke that. We just sell it. We reserve the right to speak for the young and the stupid. So it basically says how they intentionally recruiting high schoolers. And even their advertising, so advertising in the songs and we see in the daily news feeds. So they are using our humors against us. So we should escape from this deep valley and ban e-cigarettes in high schools. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Mohammed Abraar.
Mohammed, thank you. So I'm sorry, students, if you guys could not clap, and I'll explain to you why a little bit later. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Alessandro Quinteros. I'm a member of Advocates for Healthy Choices. I'm a senior at Royball High School. I would like to bring the council members into realization that there's an epidemic, a vaping in our school's epidemic. We are here to increase awareness and to end the products of flavors being sold. We would like for these companies to be held accountable for their abhorrent practices. Vaping has become a major issue in adolescents. Vaping before and after school, but in most rare occasions, even during classes. I personally have seen this, and it hinders the ability of our classrooms to go on as... The teachers sometimes notice it, and it still becomes a problem over and over again. And that's my testimony, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. I'm also gonna call Iran Di Ruiz, Madeline Orelano, Veronica Barton, Alea Clark, Ray Sean Pittman, Anthony Simmons, Ashley Cruz.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Jose Navarro, eleventh grader from Sanse Education Complex in District Nine. As many know, e-cigarettes have taken the youth's interest by storm, making their products look attractive to the youth. Such as the company Juul is the most commonly known e-cigarette company. Naming their products that may catch a child's interest. But those products contain many harmful chemicals. One most commonly known as nicotine. Nicotine is a stimulant drug. Stimulant can cause overstimulation, cause anxiety, panic, seizures, headaches, stomach cramps, aggression, and paranoia. Well, Juul has more than twice the amount of nicotine concentrate as many other brands of e-cigarettes. So no exemptions to big tobacco companies like Juul stop them from affecting ours and the next generation's future. Thank you.
Thank you. What was your name, young man?
Jose.
Jose, thank you. I'm gonna also call, last call, Griselda Michael Olivares, AJ, and Kevin P. That's our last call for these individuals.
Hi, my name is Griselda Perez, and I'm a parent and volunteer for my junior high school, Walter, and I'm a mom of three kids. And I'm a community member too. For the... I work and only advocate for all our kids that I see around. And as a mom, responding to my nine-year-old, what it is, those flavoring things that he sees, and what to be educated and tell him what is going on with his health is really hard. So I see it in school. We need your help. As the parents, we're doing our part. The school needs you because we see those things, but we just can't stop it. Those kids get those flavor-piping things, cigarettes, in their hands. And as much as we can, we can stop it. So the school needs you, the community needs you, and it's in your hands to help our kids, to help our future generations. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Malin. I am here advocating on behalf of District Nine, here with my fellow peers. Here, as we all know, e-cigarettes contain nicotine, and that is a very addicting ingredient. And it has caused many kids like us to inhale what's contained in there. And honestly, it hurts my nose. I'm sure a lot of people can relate. And we need to take care of not only this generation, but our future generation. And we want to do as much as possible to ban nicotine and e-cigarettes. And I mean, essentially, like, e-cigarettes products were essentially made to replace e-cigarettes... I mean cigars, cigarettes. And now they are being attracted... Kids are being attracted by them through social media and advertisements and TV stations such on. So, um, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Angela. I am a senior at Belmont High School. Ending the sale of flavored tobacco without exception is the only way to keep children safe. In 2016, California raised the minimum legal sale age for tobacco products to twenty-one. Tobacco and vape shop have the lowest compliance with this law, with one out of three tobacco and vape shops selling to underage minors. The bottom line is that tobacco uses flavor to hook young people on nicotine, and you can stop this. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I'm gonna call Jimmy Delgado again, Ashley Cruz, Angel Bernal, Luis Linares, and Natalia Sarano. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Jesus Trejo. I'm here representing Belmont High School as well, and would like to say that it is imperative that all city ends the sale of flavored tobacco products, including menthol, spray meat, and mine products. We don't want our generations nor the ones who continue to be affected by that. Your actions will prevent the start of a generation of new smokers. Thank you.
What was your name again?
Jesus Trejo.
Jesus, thank you, Jesus. Next.
Hello, my name is Ray Sean Pittman, and I'm advocating for the end of vaping. As a result to Juuling, many of the youth become addicted to the nicotine in this product that has a very harmful effect on developing brains like mine. Also, Juuling can develop long-term conditions. Some of them are popcorn lung, which danger the lung airways, which make you cough and feel short of breath. Another is heart disease, which refers to deformities in the heart, and another is cancer. Juuling isn't good for our communities and the people that uses it. And if we can end Juuling in our communities, kids like me can have a healthier life. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Anthony Simmons. I'm a freshman at Susan Miller Dorsey High School. And I would say, most of the cities that are passing ordinances to end the sale of flavored tobacco products are not including any exemptions. These exemptions leave a loophole for youth to access flavored products and create unnecessary enforcement headaches. Some other cities that have passed these ordinances early on are learning this the hard way. For example, the Oakland ordinance included an exemption for adult-only tobacco shops. As a result, some merchants, such as food markets, are investing large sums of money to build in-store adult-only structures or rooms with separate entrances, which they aim to operate independently of the primary store. Oh, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, my name is Veronica Barton. I am from Advocates of Healthy Choices. I'm a sophomore at Crenshaw High School. I'm speaking for the young people who could not attend. Ending the sale of flavored tobacco without expansion is the only way to keep kids safe.
My name is Alea Clark. I'm a sophomore at Crenshaw High School. And the popularity of menthol cigarettes is also evidenced by brand preference among youth. According to data from 2015 National Survey on Drug Use and Health, one in five smokers ages twelve to seventeen prefers Newport cigarettes, a heavily marketed menthol cigarette brand. Preference for Newport is even higher among African-American youth smokers, sixty-nine point one percent because of targeted marketing by the tobacco industry. The bottom line is that the tobacco uses flavors to hook young people on nicotine, and you can stop it.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, my name's Iran Di Ruiz, and I attend Augustus F. Hawkins. And today I'm here to talk to you about vaping and why it's bad. It not only affects me, my fellow classmates, but it also affects young people as well and even the next generation that's gonna come after us. I'm tired of walking to school every day thinking, oh, am I, you know, receiving secondhand smoke? Or am I... Sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead.
As I was saying, I'm tired of walking to school every day thinking if I'm receiving secondhand smoke. And I think that's a very big problem because it affects us very deeply, and I feel like it's a bad thing, and it should be stopped because it only makes it worse for people who are vaping it and people who are receiving it as well. Thank you.
Good job, Ms. Ruiz. I'm gonna also call up Antonio Orozco, Terrell Richardson, Jesse Ramos, Ambrosio Aguilar, and Roberto Levia.
Good afternoon. My name is Luis Naras. I'm speaking on... I'm a freshman at West Adams Preparatory High School. I'm speaking on the behalf of our anti-vaping program we have. And I'm here with some of my partners here. The members are also part of the program. I'm here to speak on the epidemic and the problem we have vaping today amongst our youth. And I don't have much time to speak, but what I want to say is that I think that the sales of vaping products and vaping shops should not be allowed in the vicinity of our schools. This only worsens the problem that we have. And I think that any vaping shops that are open around our school should be shut down. Any future shops that are in thoughts of being opened should be vetoed and condemned. And I hope you can take my thoughts and keep it in mind and consider doing something. I think doing this will be a start to ending the epidemic and the problem we have amongst our youth nowadays. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And your name was?
Luis Naras.
Luis, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Angel Bernal. I'm from West Adams Preparatory. I'm a ninth grader from there. I want to speak on behalf of all students, suffering and future generations. I want to stop anti-vaping so we could... So we could look forward on what's on behalf, like, our education, going to college, getting a good job on our life, instead of thinking about, oh, what I'm gonna smoke tomorrow, what flavor I'm gonna get. Instead of... So I know it's... We should stop it, hookah, menthol, any flavor. I don't care about what... If they have a job that's checking it. I want someone to stop it at all times. I don't want to have a friend that's suffering from an addiction from an e-cigarette or someone that I know is suffering from an e-cigarette. Thank you.
Great job. I'm also gonna call Jordan A. Next. Go ahead. State your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Antonio Orozco, and I'm a student at John C. Fremont High School. I stand before you today to talk about the ban of e-cig flavors and its effect on the youth. This product is causing addiction at a rapid pace, and one of the big groups that have taken a liking to it are teens. There's been a growing percentage in the amount of middle school and high school students using tobacco-flavored products, and my school is no exception, for vaping has become commonplace. I was recently notified by peers that some kids in elementary school were even caught vaping. And we all know that tobacco is bad for people, and adding flavor potentially makes it even more dangerous and attracts a younger audience as well. And I can speak on behalf of my friends and family when I tell you to put a ban on this product without exemption to not only help our generation, but future generations as well. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Terrell Richardson, and I'm also from John C. Fremont High School. I'm here supporting the full ban with no exams on e-cigs and all artificial flavors provided. They not only affect young adults such as high schoolers and college students, but even younger audiences such as middle schoolers and even, in some cases, elementary students. The bright colors and fruity flavors are obviously... Well, I personally believe that obviously it's attracting minors to smoke. There's no doubt about it. So now I ask you again, banning e-cigs and all their artificial flavoring because before, it destroys a huge percentage of our youth, or for better or worse in future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon. My name is Roberto Leva, and I'm a student on John C Fremont. I'm here to advocate for the ban of e-cigs and the easy access that us teens have to them around our community. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm gonna call Jordan A again, as well as Jimmy Delgado, um, Madeline Orellano, and Ashley Cruz. Go ahead.
Uh, my name is Ambrosio Aguilar, and I'm from, I'm a senior at John C Fremont. Uh, I feel like all this flavored tobacco affects a lot of our young, young adults. And uh, there has been uh, some cases where there has been people that have died about this, and it affects our, also our young community like us, you know? And we're not even fully developed, and we taking that in our bodies, that's bad. And I've, like, people that sell this, they don't even care about, about our health. As long as they're making their cash, like the hookah launches and stuff like that, then they keep selling it. They don't care about our health, as long as they're making their cash.
Great. Thank you. Last speaker? Are you a speaker? No? Well, thank you. I just wanna really give uh, a big kudos to Garfield, students from Garfield, Mendoza, Santee, Royville, Belmont, um, Crenshaw, Dorsey, Fremont. I think I missed a school or two, but thank you so much for taking time out and testifying and giving your testimony today. Thank you so very much. Have a good hold of applause. Um. Last two speakers, Wayne from Encino and Mike Greenspan. And uh, and for all of the individuals who came out today and for the first time who are, who are here, and for students who are here, um, I just want you to know that this is First Amendment rights, and we allow everyone to speak um, equally, speak freely, and that's why we wanna be as consistent, as fair as possible. That's why we give everybody a minute. And, and on top of that, we want, that's why we don't want clapping as well, because we have to treat everybody equally. So Wayne, go ahead. Take your minute.
First, give a hand our city attorney, Mike Furor. Oh, come on, show him the love.
Wayne, if you could speak.
Show him the love.
Please uh, address us.
Double Harvard grad. Okay, so now we got ourselves the vaping, but you talking about hookah. Now, of course, hookah is involved in religious ceremonies, and it's a part of a culture that involves itself. In religion, therefore, it is protected under the First Amendment. Right, Mr. Furor?
Right, Mr. Spindler.
So what are we gonna do? We're going to exclude hookah from this ban, right?
No, cuz the city likes to get sued, so we're gonna go ahead and make, do the wrong thing. But I wanna wish everybody happy hookah Hanukkah. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Wayne. Mike Greenspan, and Mike, we got a lot of high school students in the audience.
Mike Greenspan, 10 and 2 Florida Gator, UCLA. I don't. Well, one thing I can remember, being in high school, we'd smoke in the bathrooms. Hey, why aren't we outlawing bathrooms in high schools? That would solve the problem, wouldn't it? Well, I wanted to mention, also, thank you for mentioning Juul. Why would I say thank you for mentioning Juul? Because our city council president, Herb Wesson, got a jewel of a contribution of $15,000 from Juul. So after all, it, I really wanna believe you guys and what you say, but it would kind of remind me of this guy named Reverend Jimmy Swaggart that would preach against prostitution and then get caught at the bordello. And I'm wondering when this thing gets presented at the full council meeting and Nury's presiding, guess where Herb Wesson's going to be? He'll be in the back, smoking his ciggy butts. So, and one other thing, bock, 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 bock! Bring those UCLA chickens to the swamp.
Thank you, Mike. And that concludes public comment. That concludes public comment. Um, as the audience exits, if you could keep your noise down, be very much appreciated. Thank you so very much. And now we are very fortunate to have our city attorney joining us today, Mr. Mike Furor, who I'd like to bring up to the table along with the CLA for their presentation. And if the audience could be very quiet, please. If you could keep your voices down as you're exiting. Thank you. Oh, you wanna say a few words? Okay. And Wayne, this is your first warning. You've been great so far. This is your first warning. Please keep it down. And um, uh, and before, actually, Mr. City Attorney, before you speak, um, I think uh, my, my colleague, Mr. O'Farrell, would like to say a few words. Who is the maker of this motion?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Uh, let me just start by thanking everyone from virtually every age group and every demographic who took time out of your day today to come in and testify about issues that are so very important to the health, welfare, and well-being of people at every age. Um, I wanna start, I know that the young folks are leaving right now, but one young man said something that really resonated with me, uh, and I heard a lot of wonderful things today. But he said, "Prevent the initiation of a new generation from nicotine addiction." That, to me, is what this is all about. We learned back in 2013 and 2014, as we were beginning and we effectuated the regulation of vaping the exact same way we do tobacco, which we completed that task in February of 2014. We knew then that vaping devices were a nicotine delivery device. That's exactly what they were. Let me just say a few brief words about tobacco and my family. I was raised in a household where my grandparents and my parents chain smoked. Two of my grandparents die, well, three of my grandparents died of cancer. One was lung cancer, one was cancer spread throughout his body, and the other was uh, cancer from smoking, mouth cancer. The other grand, my, one of my grandmothers died of a stroke from, I think, being in a house where her husband chain smoked one cigarette after the other, several packs a day. My brother and sisters and I were raised in a hermetically sealed house where both of my parents chain smoked several packs a day. And when we traveled by car, the chain smoking continued with the windows rolled up, with the four of us in the car. Now, I am a very, very healthy 59-year-old, never felt better, but I have lung damage. My allergist will tell you that I have the lungs of a 70-something-year-old. And that's because of, and my brother and sisters are in the same shape. Now, I'm on regular medication for that, and I will be for the rest of my life. If we knew then what we know now, I'm sure that my story and millions of others, just like my story, could have been prevented. The damage from smoking to all of our communities is in the multi-billion of dollars in healthcare costs per year, not to mention a diminished quality of life. Imagine the millions of Americans in my situation that don't have adequate healthcare and how that suffering continues once they've been raised in that type of environment. We, we know that in addition to everything else, we are exposed to various elements that are in our environment already, much less secondhand smoke in areas where we experience secondhand smoke or the clouds from folks who are vaping and the hazards that are contained in that as well. A lot of statistics were um, read and, and daylighted in the testimony, so I'll spare you most of those that I have written down. But some of the other outstanding features of this epidemic uh, is, as you heard, I, I, I think the young woman from Equality, California said it. 71% of all young LGBTQ smokers use menthol cigarettes. That's commensurate with the African-American community in terms of youth as well. My father, who was not Native American, but my mother, who is Native American, they both come from uh, adverse backgrounds financially. They were targeted to smoke when they were teenagers. My father began at age 12 or 13. My mother was 15. They both died young as a result. My mother was exposed to it in the smoke shops in native, you know, Indian country where she was raised. My father, a poor farm kid from Oklahoma, exposed to it as a teenager. It's a lifelong habit they never, ever could escape, and I watched both of them die very slowly. Lung cancer and COPD and emphysema. Make no mistake about it, youth are targeted to this day, whether it's vaping or whether it's cigarettes or whether it's flavors. We knew that in 2014 we had an issue. That's why we regulated vaping, just like we do tobacco. We know now that there are, I can't even tell you the number of flavors there are now. Uh, six years ago, there were a couple of dozen. Now it's in the thousands because that's, that is the, the new and attractive delivery system to get kids hooked to nicotine. Uh, and that is evil. There's no question about it. We know that uh, that 80% of high school um, schoolers um, who vape uh, use fruit or sweet flavors. That's way up from just a number of years ago. Um, colleagues, what I wanna, and everyone listening, what I wanna make sure is implicitly clear here is that what we seek to do here, and we'll hear the reports from our city attorney and, and his team and the CLA's office, we seek to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products, but it would still be, be legal to possess flavored tobacco products, including menthol tobacco products. Uh, it would not be illegal to use them. It would be illegal to sell, sell them. That's where we're, we're going after. And we haven't made our final decisions on any of this yet. We will have the discussion after the presentation. I wanna thank everyone again. We've heard over and over again from all sides on this issue, including small businesses. Uh, and we've already started discussions with our Economic Development Office and City Attorney's Office to ensure that small businesses will be able to prepare and adjust to whatever determinations we make today. Uh, so with that, we'll hear from our city attorney, and I wanna thank the city attorney and your team for the incredible partnership and collaboration we've had thus far in making pretty significant steps. We were one of the first cities to, to act to regulate uh, vaping products like tobacco products, and it was a floor fight on this council. It was a little controversial six years ago. Um, but we knew then that there was enough science um, to guide us to do the right thing for our youth. And um, I am very hopeful that we will stay on that track with what decisions we make today. Thank you. And with that, our city attorney, Mike Furor.
Mr. Chair, shall I proceed?
Yes, Mr. City Attorney, thank you so much for attending again personally, and um, if you could share us, share with us your presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. It's good to be here. Um, I'm here today to stand with the kids who have participated throughout uh, this afternoon and advocate for a citywide ban on the sale of flavored tobacco products without exemptions. Uh, our office has a lot of experience, as you know, on tobacco issues. Uh, we may have the leading local tobacco control program in the United States. Uh, as you know, we have sued uh, online companies that uh, we alleged marketed vape products to kids. We issued more than 300 tobacco permit suspensions for selling to kids. And just this year alone, we've investigated more than 2,000 allegations of furnishing tobacco to kids. It's a very expansive program. I've just touched on a few elements of it. As Mr. O'Farrell indicated, we also work very closely with the city council. And Mr. O'Farrell, in particular, on the issue he just described, regulating the use and, and uh, sale of e-cigarettes. I remember that fight very well. I was here for that as well, and it's important to be back today. I have a lot of respect for members of the public who testified on both sides of the issue today. I'm very cognizant of the range of opinion you've heard today. Uh, I'm here because I wanna explain why I feel so strongly that a citywide ban without exceptions makes sense. Bottom line is, it is focused on protecting our kids. I'm gonna cite a few statistics. I know many have been, many about today. Uh, the Surgeon General and leading public health researchers report, among other things, flavored tobacco products are starter products for kids. Flavors, including menthol, mask the natural harshness and taste of tobacco. Uh, they make it, that makes it easier for kids to start and sustain tobacco use. We know the flavors in vape liquid. Just a few examples are, you know, candy, bubble gum, Kool-Aid, banana split. So it's no surprise that just from 2017 to 2018, there was nearly an 80% increase in vaping among high school students. In the same period, almost a 48% increase in vaping by middle school students. Interestingly, at the same time, in California, youth cigarette smoking declined a little bit. Well, kids are beginning to switch to vape products because of the flavors. 86% of California youth tobacco users said they use flavored tobacco products. And the flavors we ban, and I know this is controversial with some, and I respect all views on this, but the flavors we ban should include menthol. Nationally, more than half of high school students who use e-cigarettes use menthol or mint, more than half of kids. Among kids who use Juul between 18 and 21, cool mint was the most popular flavor. In California, more than 40% of high school students who smoke traditional cigarettes smoke menthol. And again, because menthol masks the harshness of otherwise what cigarettes would taste like. Menthol intensifies youth dependence on smoking. Adolescents who smoke cigarettes are much more likely to smoke menthol than adults are, and studies document that that creates a dependence that is harder and harder to break. The majority of menthol users, by the way, menthol smokers, say that they would be likely to stop smoking altogether if menthol were not available to them, something to bear in mind as we contemplate what to do here. Cal, we should join the 54 jurisdictions in California, including LA County, that have banned flavored tobacco sales. And as Mr. O'Farrell mentioned, and as a student earlier mentioned, the bottom line reason for that is, we have a moment here to contribute in the city of Los Angeles to what I hope will be a nationwide effort to prevent that next generation of kids from being hooked on tobacco products. Now, I wanna conclude my remarks by going through quickly a few of the key arguments made against my proposal that we ban flavored tobacco products without exception. Some have said, "Look, we already prohibit tobacco sales to kids. Why don't we just limit the sale to stores that cater to people 21 years old and older?" I get the argument. We have some data on which to base our decision because Oakland is an example of a city who did that. What happened in Oakland when they limited sales to 21 and over? There were five adult-only stores selling tobacco products before the ordinance. There were 52 afterwards. We don't want more such stores, I don't think. In Oakland, loopholes are being exploited. Food markets are developing in-store adult-only sections. Gas stations trying to divide their stations into two separate locations. It becomes very hard to enforce, and it's simply not working there. Some have said, "Look, if you ban all flavored tobacco products, you're gonna prevent adults who are trying to stop using cigarettes from taking advantage of the possibilities that vaping might offer them." Well, first, let me underscore that under the proposal, vape could still be sold, just not flavored vape. Second, vape, as this committee knows, is not established to be a tobacco cessation device. The FDA has not said it is, and in fact, Juul is being sued over a claim that it is. And here's an important statistic. For every person who stopped traditional tobacco through using e-cigarettes, 80 kids and young adults started using tobacco. So let me shift to two more, three other arguments, and I'll be done. Some will say that a ban is gonna lead to an illicit market. There's no evidence of that. Look to San Francisco. Hasn't happened up there. Some have said that a ban generally is gonna unduly restrict adult choice, that it's too paternalistic to do that when it comes to adults. But we have taken steps as a government here in Los Angeles, and of course nationally as well, to intercede when we think that there are important safety reasons to do this. Seat belts are an example. This council's efforts on gun violence prevention are an example too. We limit choice when we think that is there a need to, does a need to do that. Now, I wanna turn to one of the most controversial elements of the discussion today. Some have said that a ban that includes menthol is gonna unfairly target the African-American community. And we've heard both sides of that argument today. It's an important argument, and it was vetted with great respect on all sides. And there are sides here. The NAACP has come out in favor of no exemptions inclu, and in favor of prohibiting menthol. Delta Sigma Theta has done the same thing. Others, including others here today, have argued the opposite. There are, however, and this is an important point, there are established people and organizations whom we respect on both sides of this issue. It is not a one-sided conversation on either side. And I, I must say, I choose to stand with the NAACP and Delta Sigma Theta on this issue because Mr. O'Farrell referred to targeting, and I think you've, you know this from our report and other testimony. It is the case. It is the case that the African-American community in particular, in the 1950s, was targeted by big tobacco. It was a disgusting and insulting campaign, of which we have come to be aware recently. They targeted African-American community, and it worked. The fact that the African-American community has been targeted by big tobacco to induce people to smoke menthol cigarettes is a scandal and a disgrace. What do we do about it now? Well, we know that a ban could help reverse that trend. We know that a ban on menthol could help save lives, because statistics show that when the menthol's not available, people stop smoking. And I do want to underscore a point Mr. O'Farrell made, and that is, what's on the table is not a ban on the use of a menthol cigarette, for instance. I know some have said, if we put this ban in place, it's going to result in some very inappropriate interactions between police and members of the community, for instance. Well, no one is coming after someone for smoking a menthol cigarette. The enforcement strategies are going to be focused exclusively on the sale of menthol cigarettes. And I thought that was a very important point Mr. O'Farrell made. We need to underscore it. Finally, opponents have said of the idea that we should put this exemption ban in place, say it's bad for business and jobs. I'll note, in San Francisco, where they did this, according to surveys, there were 799 businesses before and the same number after. It may be that there are some exceptions to this now, but I'm not aware that any tobacco licensed business went out of business in San Francisco after the ban was put in place. And as Mr. O'Farrell suggested, the council could choose to put a transition period in place as well, to ease a transition to these rules. Finally, another controversial issue, where I respect opinions on all sides. Some have said the ban is unfair to the hookah community. Let's go through that just for one second, and I'll conclude. Hookah tobacco is the second most used flavored tobacco. 70% of youth hookah users attribute their use of hookah to its flavors. One hookah smoking session, by the way, can result in inhaling the same amount of smoke in 100 cigarettes. Our office works with LAPD on enforcement of the city's rules. There was a recent undercover LAPD operation of the 14 hookah operations through which the undercover work pertained, 10. 10 of those locations sold to an undercover decoy who was a kid. Now, just a note, by the way, hookah lounges are not recognized under state law. Hookah is prohibited in bars, restaurants, and lounges. The only lawful hookah business is a smoker's lounge without food and without alcohol. And for that reason, our office has filed more than 60 cases against unlawful hookah locations. There are choices to be made here. I think this council should err on the side of protecting our kids and enacting a ban on flavored tobacco that has no exceptions to it. The county just did that. There's not a reason in the world why the city shouldn't do it either. And I strongly recommend, and I vote on a motion that does that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. And does the CLA also have a presentation? Or?
No, Mathias Farfam for CLA's office, City Attorney. He's done an excellent job of presenting.
Great. Well, I just want to thank you again, Mr. City Attorney, for being in the forefront of these issues and being so collaborative. And you know, whether it's in the arena of, like you stated, guns, tobacco, or even Wells Fargo, you have been taking such a proactive stance. And we really appreciate you, and it's great to have a partner like you, especially in this fight, and for you to personally champion against this growing epidemic. But now, I'd like to turn it over to our champion on the city council, my colleague, Councilmember Mitchell Farrell, to take over.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Mr. Fuhr, for your words and your thoughts and your history with this issue. Some questions. In relation to entire states that have done a flavor ban, how many states, is it just Massachusetts that we're aware of?
Yes. And Michigan, Massachusetts, and I believe New York.
And within those three states, what types of, what mix of exemptions or tightening of various products? I'm sure they weren't all identical.
They were not. Each state kind of did a different. I think in our report, we went through more of the cities and counties in California, but we can obtain that information for you shortly. We'll have someone look that up for you.
It's a question of scale, since the city of Los Angeles has the population of about half of the US states. What we're about to do is pretty significant. So if it's in the report, we'll check it out. Then perhaps it would be better if you could give just a mix of examples with cities in California and what types of exemptions exist or don't exist.
The report contains that mix. And the options reflected in what other cities have done include, as I mentioned, in some cities, there has been a restriction to stores that sell to people who are 21 years old and older. In some locations, there's a complete ban of flavored sales, tobacco sales. In some cities, there is an exemption for menthol. There may be, I'm not sure, Colonel Selena, some exceptions for hookah in some locations. I believe that's the case also.
Kind of a mix.
There's a menu of things. Beverly Hills bans all tobacco products of every nature altogether. So there's a real spectrum of approaches being taken. The approach that our office is recommending be taken, that I personally recommend be taken, mirrors what LA County has done, and with regard to flavored tobacco, what San Francisco has done, among other jurisdictions.
And you mentioned Oakland as perhaps enacting an ordinance with some unintended consequences. To your knowledge, are they looking to revise that ordinance?
There's a lot of discussion in Oakland about whether to change the ordinance, and a lot of disagreement in the business community about the effects that were not intended of the ordinance that was adopted.
And would it make sense to include language in our ordinance to also prohibit products manufactured with the intent of flavoring nicotine or tobacco products? Could that be some sort of, I don't know, loophole that opens up?
Yes, and we've already seen those products on the market. They're almost like a contraption that you can put on an e-cigarette device that was originally unflavored to add flavoring. So that would have to be incorporated in any type of restriction.
And we could incorporate that into our ordinance?
Yes.
Great. And can we legally require 21 and over tobacco retailers to have a scanner and scan government IDs?
Yes. And some jurisdictions have done that as well.
And can you explain to everyone the classification of a smoker's lounge? What that means? What types of uses can legally take place there? And what types of limitations?
Sure. So the smoker's lounge is something in state law as part of the California Labor Code. As you know, smoking is prohibited in all California workplaces, with smoking lounges being an exemption. So you can smoke a cigar in a smoker's lounge. You can smoke hookah in a smoker's lounge. However, if you sell or serve food or beverage or alcohol, then you cannot qualify as a smoker's lounge. Currently, we do have many businesses that are furnishing hookah, but they aren't qualifying as smoker's lounges, because, like I said, they're either serving food or they have an ABC license. So I think, or when we did our enforcement and we did a survey, we found approximately 100 venues in the city of LA that were furnishing hookah. We think maybe about 15% are actually operating lawfully.
Lawfully?
Correct.
And within, under the roof of a smoking lounge, can you have subdivided sections where you have a lounge in one portion and then cocktails in another, but separate?
No. That would, no, you couldn't do that. That would be equivalent to maybe having a restaurant and having a smoking section in a restaurant. You're either a smoker's lounge or not.
And my information's probably six or eight weeks old, but when I did some research, I learned that about a third of the sales are at retail stores for flavored tobacco, and about a third are online. That's probably going to change. Maybe it's already changed. And that's a rough number, roughly. What kind of power do we have to control online sales?
I'll actually address that. So, well, let me be clear. If it is unlawful to sell in the city of Los Angeles, the question would be tantamount to how we address the issue of vaping. We can, there are two different questions. One is, is it practical to enforce? The other is, is it lawful to enact such a law? Practically speaking, we could enforce such a law. When we sued vaping companies for allegedly marketing to kids, we bought vaping products pretending to be an underage person. The result of that effort was an investigation that led to a lawsuit, that led to a resolution that changed the practices of those companies. Is labor-intensive to do that? I will turn to our team here to discuss whether there is any inhibition on a city banning online sales within its jurisdiction.
Oh, I can speak as to San Francisco. When San Francisco chose to ban all e-cigarettes that did not have FDA approval, they included in their ordinance a prohibition on shipping any of those products to anyone in the city of San Francisco. So there could be that restriction.
Okay, that could be imposed. Hard to regulate, perhaps, but...
I was just going to say, how we define sale could include delivery in Los Angeles. And I believe certain fur sale bans do the same thing.
And it would probably be accurate to say, we need help from the state and the feds for interstate commerce and online sales of a variety of things that might be illegal in a state or a city.
Well, Mr. O'Farrell, I mean, I'm sorry, I just wanted to say, this effort that is before you today underscores, again, a dynamic that we see playing out frequently under this administration in Washington. Local jurisdictions, on my view, have an obligation to step in as the federal government either retreats or abdicates responsibility. The president, as you know, famously said he was going to move initially to prevent the sale of flavored tobacco products. As you know, that is now history. There's no activity on that front that I'm aware of at the moment.
I wasn't holding my breath either.
As it were, yes. So it seems to me that the federal, we need to operate as though there will not be federal intervention on this issue. And then bear in mind what our responsibilities are to the children of our city.
And there were lots of speakers from schools and parents who have youth in schools. We know that if there's vaping happening anywhere on a school campus, that someone illegally got the vaping materials to a youth. We know that's already illegal. What can we do in terms of educational opportunities for underage vaping and smoking at schools?
Well, first, I will point out, our office is the recipient of a grant from the state attorney general to conduct an aggressive education campaign focused on kids regarding issues of vaping. That education campaign derives from focus groups with whom we interacted. And I will say, the kids who are part of focus groups said, don't just tell us what to do, and don't act in the way that's going to scare us for the sake of scaring us. Give us the facts. So our program, entitled Disobey Vape, provides the facts to students. And you can see it online. You've seen billboards. There are a variety of elements to this campaign. If there were more resources, we would expand the campaign still further. I will tell you that the state of California has asked us about the possibility of using our materials at that level, because they are deeming them so effective.
And we talk about the, what we're going after are the sales, not the use, but the sales. So can you go over again the mechanisms for enforcement?
Sure. Anyways... So as you know, we permit all city tobacco retailers. So it would basically be a condition of their permit that they wouldn't be allowed to sell flavored tobacco products. In terms of enforcement, we have a very robust enforcement program, both investigators with our permitting, and then we also have the grant with LAPD. So there wouldn't be any additional resources needed, but we can enforce the retailer restrictions that we already enforce now.
Okay, thank you. And in terms of tobacco products being sold to minors, that's a misdemeanor if someone is caught selling a tobacco product to a minor?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report and for your work on this very, very important topic that really affects our whole community. When we previously heard this item, I ask that the city attorney and CLA's office meet with stakeholders regarding this issue. Could you tell us a little bit about those meetings, or the focus group?
Sure.
Who was in attendance? And what were the major concerns raised by those who participated in the...
Absolutely. So we convened a stakeholder meeting, and we had probably about 40 attendees, 40 to 50, representing both sides of this issue. Many of the people that were here today actually spoke at our stakeholder meeting. So we had both people in support, health advocates, doctors, children, medical professionals, community members. And we also had tobacco industry supporters as well. We had the hookah chamber there. We had people opposing an exemption, or I'm sorry, opposing, including the menthol in the ordinance. It was pretty much a smaller version of what you saw here today.
And Mr. Price, I tried in my remarks to review the arguments that have been most prevalent, including in our stakeholder meetings, and provide what I think is the response to each of those arguments. My view, as you know from my work in the legislature, is if you can't make the other side's arguments as well as they can, and then shoot them down, you're on the wrong side. I think we can, in fact. We do have the better of the arguments in each of those cases.
Well, several individuals raised concerns about the unintended consequences of a full flavor ban. How do you respond to individuals who feel that this is going to permit, give the police license to interact negatively with citizens for low-level, nonviolent offenses?
So I tried to address this earlier. Let me do my best now. The major issue, I think, Mr. Price, that you're addressing, and if I'm wrong, please redirect me to what you care about, is especially will communities of color, particularly African-American...
Absolutely, black and brown.
Particularly African-American residents of our city be in some manner put into context where law enforcement is harassing them, is behaving badly, is trying to enforce a rule about something as basic as whether they're smoking a cigarette? And the concern is, is are we going to create a rule that's going to create that dynamic, right?
Right.
And the answer in the strongest possible terms is no. If I felt that that were a natural consequence of this, or even an inadvertent possibility, I would not be here advocating for a ban with no exemptions, because that is wrong. The fact is that the law that is before us, the proposal before us, bans the sale, the sale of flavored tobacco products, not the use of tobacco products. No one should ever be, have an interaction with law enforcement as to whether they're smoking a cigarette that has a flavor in it, because that is not allowed under the ordinance. This is only about the sale. And if such an interaction, like I just described, were to occur on the street, that would, I would think, be a subject of discipline with the LAPD, because it would be contrary to what the law says.
Have we discussed with the LAPD yet how we're going to enforce this ban should it passes?
Well, I'll turn to Selena for that, and I'll come back and say a few words.
Generally, but I can say that it's not going to be any different than any other tobacco restriction that we enforce. We enforce several different tobacco laws and requirements for tobacco retailers, including what they can and cannot sell. For example, you can't sell cannabis at a tobacco shop. So if they go in and they see cannabis, that would be a violation. So if they were to go into a retail store and see flavored tobacco, it would be the same way that they would enforce anything else. They would just, the retailer would be cited for selling that product. But they wouldn't be able to stop, like Mr. Fuhr said, they wouldn't be able to stop a person on the street for simply smoking a menthol cigarette.
Yeah, I'm just going to underscore, we need, especially right now in our city, to be inspiring trust between law enforcement and every community in Los Angeles. And we should not be considering proposals that will undermine that trust. In this instance, that trust will not be undermined, because the methods by which we enforce our tobacco restrictions now, which are us, law enforcement, to seller, will be the same methods employed after this ordinance passes. It'll only be applied to one additional item, which is flavored tobacco. Same enforcement strategies, about which I have heard no complaints at all from any communities about inappropriate enforcement.
Well, obviously, the concerns, I think, are not about using, but selling. You know, with the Earl Garner situation in New York, the guy was selling singles, and that's quite common, to tell you the truth. It happens in our community. It happens in our community. And those are the kinds of consequences that folks are afraid of and are concerned about.
But, but for, Mr., oh, I'm sorry.
And, and a number, and as you know, certainly the community is split on this. A number of organizations have come out on both, both sides. But it is something, it's very, very disconcerting.
Yes. And I, as you point out, there is a split of opinion among those who have expressed views from the African-American community on this issue. I, I wanna point out that those, I think, the advocates who have spoken, the organizations who've spoken in favor of a ban with no exemptions, have the better of the argument, in part based on other experience. For example, again, in San Francisco, there's been no illicit market that's emerged. I, I understand the, the Eric Garner example is deeply troubling, but not because of the nature of this law, it's deeply troubling because of the incredibly inappropriate interaction between law enforcement and Mr. Garner on the streets of, of New York. Here, again, I wanna underscore, the exact same enforcement strategies would be employed the day after this ordinance was in place as today. The only difference would be, we're adding a product that cannot be sold to the regime of things that would be restricted. Same enforcement strategies. We're not seeing that enforcement strategy that you're describing now, it wouldn't arise afterwards either.
Well, you know, San Francisco's not South LA.
Well, I understand.
Nor New York, and so every situation is a little different.
But, but leaving that aside, I guess I'm, I underscore, same enforcement regime, just adding a different element to that regime. If it were the case, Mr. Price, for example, that we learned, that you apprised our office that there was inappropriate enforcement right now, that'd be really important to know, and I would wanna look into that very seriously. I have not heard that concern. After this passes, same enforcement strategy about which we've not heard that concern would continue.
Well, currently, selling of cigarettes is not against the law.
No, but furnishing to kids is, as an example.
Correct, and we certainly are not challenging the, the need to, to ban sales for youth. That, that clear, that's a clear situation. But let me ask one other question, so we can, can we move on. Many of the neighboring cities around this area, for example, Inglewood, Southgate, Tunington Park, have taken no action on the sale and consumption of these products. So how are we going to address the issue with people who simply go back to another jurisdiction, make the purchases, and come back here?
Well, I'll offer a suggestion, just a suggestion. When I was on the city council, I was writing one law after another to help prevent gun violence by restricting sales of high-capacity magazines here, one gun a month, and so forth. And the same critique was offered when I would introduce those measures 20 years ago. NRA would say, people can just go to a neighboring jurisdiction and circumvent the law, it's pointless to do this. So I worked with a group called Women Against Gun Violence. We created a municipal gun violence working group comprised of jurisdictions that surround Los Angeles, and I and others went to neighboring jurisdictions' council meetings and testified in favor of adopting rules identical to ours, and lobbied the legislature to make these rules statewide. That could be an approach that the council wished to take regarding this issue. As an example.
Yeah. Have other cities that have implemented these bans, have they seen an increase? Do we have any figures of if they've seen an increase in illegal activities?
Well, I think actually New York is, is impositive in, in terms of that, right?
Correct. In terms of compliance, New York is probably the only place that has done a longitudinal study, because their ban has been in place the longest, and they've actually had a pretty high compliance rate amongst all retailers. In terms of...
And so they, they've seen an increase in illegal sales?
No, a decrease. Or I, I should say, a very high compliance rate, in terms of, there are, most retailers are complying with the law.
It's working in New York.
It's working.
And, and reducing youth consumption?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. O'Farrell, I think you have a recommendation.
Yeah, okay, we're ready? All right? So, thank you, thank you so much for this conversation. I, I, here's, here's the recommendations that I'm, I'm gonna make. Request the city attorney to draft an ordinance to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products and products manufactured with the intent of flavoring tobacco products, with a six-month period to allow retailers to clear their existing stock of products. Now I wanna talk about certain realities, specifically cultural realities. We know that smoking lounges exist. We know, and we heard from many of them today. We know that there, there are lots of employees that work and make a living at these smoking lounges. We know that culturally, it's a fairly robust, there's a fairly robust presence of these smoking lounges. I have real concerns about the, you know, the, the health effects of ingesting tobacco in any way, shape, or form. But at the same time, we have to recognize that there are cultural issues associated when we do an ordinance of any kind, especially if we're gonna prohibit certain uses. I have felt all along, from the very beginning, that my focus is giving young people a chance not to be bullied, marketed to, peer pressured into, or seduced into thinking that inhaling tobacco products, inhaling nicotine products is in any way healthy, cool, or sexy. There's enormous peer pressure for young people. That's always been my, where my focus is. Notwithstanding the fact that up until your mid-20s, it is really dangerous to interfere in any way with a, a lifestyle that will be healthy and help you form, fully form an adult, healthy brain, without any negative effects from the environment, whether by choice or not. So I've struggled with this whole issue with these smoking lounges, and so what I think we can do is probably strike a balance, so that we don't, in six months, cause mass layoffs and closures of some of these smoking lounges that, in my view, have, have made a pretty strong case. The last thing I wanna do is go into a direction where I put myself in the act of penalizing any one cultural experience over another, especially coming from the Native American background on my mother's side of the family. That is an issue that is very important to me, and oftentimes, there are trade-offs involved with that. But in Los Angeles, we have to be respectful of that. So what I'm gonna recommend also is that we exempt existing legally operating smokers' lounges, or smoking lounges, which will be specially permitted by the tobacco enforcement program. These smoking lounges will be limited to patrons 21 and over, no exceptions, and the sale of flavored tobacco products will be permissible for onsite consumption only, no retail. I also wanna make sure that the permits of these existing legally operating smoking lounges are not transferable. And I can keep going, I have a few other instructions. Instruct the Economic and Workforce Development Department, Business Response Unit, to work with the city attorney's office to inform and connect affected businesses to city resources, including the business source centers and various loan programs. The business source centers will conduct assessments of businesses transitioning as a result of the new law. The assessment will help determine the services and programs that are needed for businesses to stay afloat, and will help advise business owners of strategies and opportunities to grow. The city's loan programs may provide access to capital to eligible businesses to implement assessment recommendations. My fourth recommendation is require ID scanners for all locations selling tobacco products, whether for on- or off-site consumption. And my fifth one is instruct the CLA to work with CA's office, State Attorney's Office, to report on ways to work with our schools, to identify and implement innovative and adaptable new ways to educate students about tobacco use and addiction, prioritizing an interactive and peer-to-peer educational model. Those are my recommendations.
I'll second that, I'll second that, Mr. O'Farrell. Any questions?
No questions, but I just have a comment and a couple of recommendations myself. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, for, for your leadership on this issue. I know it's something that you've been focusing on over the past several years. I certainly have learned a lot from the discussion, and I wanna express again my appreciation to the comments made by all the advocates on, on all sides of this issue. And especially a shout-out to the students who were in attendance, and several of those schools were in my district, and so their, their comments were especially meaningful. Like, like many here, I've, I've had firsthand seen the effects that tobacco can have on a loved one and on the family. My dad was a tobacco victim. He passed from emphysema, you know, smoking Winstons and Salem's, you know, he was a double threat. My chief of staff also lost his father to use of tobacco. So, so I understand why people are so passionate about this, especially, especially when it comes to our youth. I think it's clear that these new flavored products, especially the vaping pens, are being used by the, by the younger generation and really targeted to that generation. So I am totally supportive of a full ban on the sale of flavored tobacco products to youth in the city of LA. In addition, however, though, I'm sensitive to the concerns raised about unintended consequences. And, and as the city attorney pointed out, there certainly is some split on this in the African-American community, split on both sides. I do believe, however, if we, if we create a situation where even adults can't purchase flavored tobacco, I do believe that we're gonna see an increase in illegal sales of cigarettes, especially in areas, in areas like my district, where the surrounding cities have not implemented such a ban. I don't want a situation in LA like that that happened in New York with Eric Garner. And I think it's important to note that just last week, New York did take this issue up and exempted flavored products in adult stores after hearing testimony from a cross-section. And other cities in California have also allowed the sale of flavored products in adult-only stores. So Councilmember Farrell, I, I agree with you that we should allow onsite consumption of flavored tobacco by adults. And I'd like to add that we also allow adults, those 21 and over, to also purchase menthol cigarettes. And to make sure that those tobacco retail stores are required to use the same age varication process and licensing process that onsite businesses will use. I believe this is a reasonable compromise, it takes into account public health concerns as well as civil rights concerns. And I don't think we should end the discussion here. I'd like to recommend that we form an implementation working group with advocates, again, from all sides, Mr. Chairman, the council, the PD, the city attorney, so that we can monitor this issue ongoing, and make sure that we review and enforce the effectiveness of the policy. Again, ensuring that there are no unintended consequences, and that the success in curbing the usage of flavored tobacco is being effective. Finally, I'd like to, to propose a study to be done within a year from now, that examines the effects of this ban, and the implementation, the implications of enforcement, and the impacts on the rate of consumption. At the end of the day, this policy is about our youth, and stopping the proliferation of flavored tobacco products that have been targeted to the younger generation. And with our vote today banning the sale of flavored tobacco to youth in the city of LA, I think we can hopefully end this proliferation. And I think that should be a goal that unites us all. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Price. So let me clarify, just so I, we have it all straight. So you're, you wanna have an amendment, first amendment is to allow for retail, retail sales in 21 and o, for menthol only?
Correct.
In 21 and over tobacco shops?
Shops, shops, stores.
Specific, narrowly focused tobacco sales only?
Only.
So in other words, you couldn't get them at a 7-Eleven, or an AMPM, or a gas station on your way home? It would be, it would be narrowly focused, and would it be also tobacco shops?
Tobacco shop, cigar lounge.
Okay, so for, for retail, specific to retail for tobacco products?
Correct.
21 and over, with a scanner?
21 and over, including menthol.
And, and would it be limited to menthol or, or any flavor? It would prohibit, it'd still prohibit vaping?
Prohibits vaping, but it would permit, but it would permit menthol.
Just to clarify, the combustible tobacco? I just, I think that's the question that the council... Is the definition? Yeah. But it would still prohibit all vaping flavors?
Correct.
Vaping liquid flavors?
And only to be sold in tobacco shops, lounges, smoke shops?
Correct.
That are specific only tobacco shops?
Except I believe we are, we're limiting tobacco lounges to onsite only and not, not retail. Correct?
Right.
So, so that, there would be, there would be, there would be a difference. So there's the consuming onsite in a tobacco lounge, which is consuming onsite only, and then there is the retail with the narrow focus of allowing combustible menthol for retail sales only.
Correct.
Not onsite.
Just wanna make sure, city attorney, is that allowable and defensible?
Two specific distinctions.
So, as a policy, is this, I believe that what you proposed reflects a policy choice without any legal impediment. If, if the committee wishes to say that you're gonna ban the sale of all flavored tobacco in Los Angeles with one exception, well, two exceptions. Exception one is pre-existing authorized lawful hookah lounges, we'll call them, smoking lounges, and the exception that menthol cigarettes could be sold, but only in stores that sell to people 21 and over with a live scan. As you know, I disagree with that choice, but that's a different question from whether it's a lawful choice. It is, on my view, unless my staff disagrees, a lawful policy determination if the committee wishes to go in that direction.
So again, the 21 and over with the menthol is tobacco-specific products, not your 7-Elevens, not your other retail outlets?
That is a policy choice the council could choose to make.
So, and, and the second, second part of your amendment was a study to study the effects of, of...
Of this, of the ban.
Of the, of the ban. Wait, that was the third, you had two, you asked for two studies or one study?
Well, there are two. One is to, to create an implementation working group with advocates from all sides, to monitor the issue going forward, and to make sure that we're enforcing the policy properly and that there are no unintended consequences.
So a creation of a working group, and the third one is a study of the effects of this ban?
Correct.
Mr. O'Farrell?
I, I, I think that we have to weigh all of the issues here. It's our responsibility. I loathe smoking, I loathe everything about tobacco, no matter how it is absorbed into the body or taken in. But we also try to stay out of the business of picking winners and losers, especially when you're taking cultural issues into consideration. We have to be sensitive to that. And, and I think that's just a reality that we have to face. So I think that if we can limit, make implicit that, that any form of tobacco inhalation is bad for you, but yet not ban it entirely for those 21 and over who choose to stay determined to utilize the product, I think that we've struck a pretty decent balance.
Mr. Chair, may I request clarification, just for one sec? So we understand exactly what's at stake before you vote?
Well, I, I think we, there's a lack of time right now, and we gotta...
It'll take just one second, I think that my staff has a key question just to understand what you're saying.
For, for which part?
Councilmember Price?
Yes.
Regarding the 21 and over store, that's where the menthol combustible cigarettes could be sold?
Correct.
In regards to that type of store, can any other products be sold there, such as candy, food, beverages, or would it be a store that's limited to tobacco products?
No, just tobacco.
Okay, so the store can only sell tobacco products?
Only sell tobacco, correct.
Only sell tobacco.
To those 21 and over.
Yeah. And, and obviously, we're gonna be sending it to your office to write this up, so we'll have a lot more time to discuss and figure this out.
And Mr. Chair, lastly, request a report back from the city attorney's office on options to regulate online sales and delivery in the city of Los Angeles as it relates to this new ordinance.
Very good.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Chair, one more clarification, so I just wanna make, make sure I...
Mr. Chair, one more clarification as well. I just want to make sure I understand that Councilmember Price's request or--
Amendment.
Suggestion for the onsite consumption matches Councilmember O'Farrell's, or are you suggesting an amendment that includes new businesses can open in the future? I wasn't sure that was clear from your statement.
In other words, mine was implicit to existing tobacco lounges only? So, the question would be, is this to existing tobacco retail sales only?
Well, I think it was about existing, but it would be limited to tobacco-only sales.
So, there's just the one addition, then, yeah?
Right. That would be consistent. Right, so, and Mr. Clerk, did you get all that? Mr. O'Farrell had six recommendations, and Mr. Price had three amendments, friendly amendments that Mr. O'Farrell has accepted. So, it's one change, and so two additional report backs, well, one working group and a report back, so there's actually eight recommendations. Okay, and so that, without any objections, that will be the recommendations approved by this committee. And I want to thank you, everyone, and thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for being here. Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, for championing this as well.
Thank you.
And I want to congratulate the city of Los Angeles for being one of the first cities, and the first large city in the nation, to pass what's arguably one of the most comprehensive bans that this nation has seen so far.
Thank you, members.
Thank you. Thank you.